The next person in line is Fickenworth.
Hello, Lee Fickenworth, 44 Exeter Street. I just want to remind you, you know, everybody out there, that September 27th, it's on Saturday, National Day of Remembrance for the Murder Victims, and starts at 1:00. We have a lot of guests that are going to be there, and I'm hoping a lot of the victim families will be there. And I hope all of you will be there. Thank you.
Will you please mention the date again?
September 27th. Thank you.
The next person in line is Paula Harek.
Hello, my name is Paula Hareker, and I live at 30 Kent Street in South Lawrence. And I'm here about the traffic on Kent Street for the right turn prohibited off of Dursow Avenue. And there's traffic all day long on Kent Street, including large trucks, and I brought pictures as evidence. And there's vehicles, I would say, not on rainy days, but on nice days, there's probably one to three cars every minute, a car, one to every three minutes that go by on Kent Street. Sometimes they go so fast, I try to take pictures of them, and I couldn't. I live about halfway from Dursow to the top of the hill on Kent Street, and by the time the cars get to my house at 30 Kent Street, they're going probably 50 miles an hour. And it's just ridiculous, and it's all day long. And one of these days, someone's going to get killed because those cars go so fast. And there's trucks, there's regular cars, and there's SUVs, and I have about 83 pictures here. Thank you for having us on the agenda.
For your information, Mr. Plant...
Yes.
It's coming up for a public hearing today. This is the item for a public hearing. She's speaking actually on behalf of document number 26514.
I didn't know if I should sign in or not, so...
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much for having me on the agenda.
Thank you. The next person in line is Kathy Runge.
Kathy Runge, 32 Drakeett Street. I just wanted to say a few words about putting the residency question on the November ballot. I was talking with my counselor, and I found out that we're going to need a lot more staff at the polls. We'll need a lot more poll workers because this is a state election, and that's a local issue, which is just going to add to the general, you know, confusion at the polls, which makes it easier, if someone is so inclined to try and fraudulently vote, to do it. And it's not even the binding question. So, I know this is coming up with the communication from the mayor, and I don't know if this would have been, be gone over then or not, but, I mean, honestly, for a non-binding question, why couldn't you just wait and put it on at the next city election? Do a petition and make it a binding referendum, if you wanted to do that. I just don't think it's a good idea to incur all the extra costs. And again, there's going to be confusion at the polls. I mean, I'm hearing things like we'll need two checkout lists and stuff like that. So I'd just like to ask you to consider that. Thank you.
This point of information, sir, to further...
Yes.
I think we should address the fact that...
It's a public...
We're not going to...
Yeah, that's going to be... That's going to be, that's going to be discussed later in the agenda. Okay, Mr. Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell, reside at 34 Cross Street in the city. First, I want to echo the sentiments of Lee and her Day of Remembrance for the Murder Victims on the 27th between 1:00 and 3:00 across the street. There were presently 116 names of murder victims over about the last 25 to 30 years in the Lawrence area. I know I have the list of names. I'm trying to set something up. The average age of the murder victim is about 28. Something has to be done to prevent the loss of the youth of the city. I realize I don't speak for everyone in the city. I may not speak for anyone in the city other than myself, but like the baseball umpire, I call him like I see him. Looking at tonight's agenda, I see some sort of communication from the council president in the form of item 328/14. It appears to be something about a proposed ballot question in reference to the residency requirement proposed change to the city charter. I must admire the city council president's tenacity in getting this piece of legislation passed. It took you three or four shots to get it through the council using various parliamentary forms of hocus pocus. The change was sent to the mayor's office, and after careful study, he decided not to sign it. It will go to the State House to do what the State House does with things, usually study it to death before coming to a conclusion that if the mayor is against it and the council president is against it or is for it, who do we believe? In a moment of sheer stupidity, it is approved. It becomes effective 90 days after passage, unless an emergency preamble gets attached to it. In that case, it would become effective the day signed by the governor. The change to the city charter that was sent to the State House had an effective date of July 1st, 2014, which will have to be amended. Now that we are, now we are hearing that you, Mr. Council President, may want a non-binding referendum on this issue. Question for you, Mr. Council President. Where's the city going to come up with the 20 grand for this ballot question for something that doesn't mean anything? I will admit that I admire your persistence in this matter, but pay for it with your own money, not mine. Quick question. Has the overseer signed off on this waste of municipal funds? With that, I thank you for the time.
The next person in line is Ismael Rondon.
My name is Ismael Rondon, 80 Hanlon Street, Lower Massachusetts, 01843. I speak, I, I'm going to speak in Spanish. I learn English. I speak very, very little English. Does, is that fine? Or somebody can translate it to me? Un pobre vendedor de frío frío.
A poor vendor of ices, slash? Frío frío.
June, June, no? No puede iniciar su negocio...
Cannot initiate his business.
...sin el permiso del consejo de la ciudad.
Without the permission of the Lawrence City Council.
Si ese laurenciano humilde...
If that humble Laurentian...
...inicia su negocio sin este permiso...
Initiates his or her business without the permission.
...podría ser sancionado...
Could be punishable.
...por no cumplir con las leyes de la ciudad.
For not having complied with the rules of the city.
Sin embargo...
But...
...el departamento de agua...
The water department.
...desde hace más de dos años...
For more than two years now.
...viene instalando equipos...
Have been installing equipment.
...que no cuentan con ningún respaldo...
And do not count with any backing from...
...de ninguna legislación.
Of any organization.
Y lejos de recibir una sanción...
And further from receiving a sanction.
...ha recibido apoyo y ha sido defendido por algunos miembros de este honorable consejo.
It has been backed and has been on the positive side of and foremost from some of the council members.
Esta noche...
This evening.
...se intentará...
The intention will be made.
...legalizar lo que hace más de dos años...
To legalize what back in a couple years ago.
...inició el departamento de agua.
Was initiated by the water department.
Yo no sé si eso es legislar a posteriori, después de...
I'm not sure if this is in posterior of...
...o si eso es retroactivo.
Or if this is retroactive.
Las personas que hemos cumplido con la ley...
The people or us who have complied with the regulations.
Como buenos residentes del país de la libertad y la democracia...
As the good residents of this country that is the democratic country of liberty.
Posiblemente seremos sancionados...
Posteriorly, we will be sanctioned.
...por ejercer nuestro derecho.
For just doing what our rights tell us that it's our right for us to do.
No sé cómo calificar eso, lo dejo a su consideración.
I'm not sure how that qualifies, but I leave it to your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person in line is Jeffrey Petrelli.
Good evening, city councilors. My name is Jeffrey Petrelli, and I reside at 341D South Broadway in South Lawrence. I'm here tonight to discuss a validation issue whereby if this were my late father, I know he would tell the duck story. He would do this when he knew you were telling him a story that was basically a lie, or whereby he knew you were embellishing the real and true facts, or when you, as he would say, "When you walk like a duck, quack like a duck, or act like a duck, therefore you must be the duck." At this time, I would like to announce a few ducks pertaining to this story. The first is city attorney Charlie Bodie. He's one of them because he has been telling me since April that he cannot advise Mayor Rivera or Commissioner Blanchett to sign a document that validates that no excavation or demolition permits were pulled by my neighbor when demolishing said sidewalk back in September 2005, or to validate Commissioner Blanchett's findings nine years after on March 21st, 2014, that these alleged permits do not exist in City Hall. The second ducks' initials are Paul Martino Jr., who was caught in the act of excavating and demolishing said city sidewalk on a September afternoon in 2005 by my late father Alfred, and later witnessed by me. I say this about Mr. Martino because he was asked how he had authorization to do this, and he told my father Alfred that he pulled permits to do so. On March 21st, 2014, it was revealed Mr. Martino never pulled these permits. Also, city attorney Charlie Bodie said he would not advise Mayor Rivera or Commissioner Blanchett to sign my validation document on the grounds that neither person witnessed these actions or chaired their positions currently held back in September 2005. I say the two of you are ducks. The same way I know Alfred Petrelli would do if he were here tonight because Alfred was here, as if Alfred was here in the moment, he would say, as if he was standing right here at 341 South Broadway, "Come here, Mr. Bodie. Come here, Mr. Martino. What's this city sidewalk doing here? It doesn't look like the same city sidewalk that was poured back in the 1960s or the 1970s, and it surely doesn't look like the same city sidewalk that was here when we moved here on July 31st, 1989." Now, I would like to ask Mrs. Alvarez a question that I, I told her that I wanted to ask her at the end of my session. May I? Okay. Mrs. Alvarez, I'd like to ask you a question.
Hello?
How much?
Excuse me? Your time is over.
Thank you.
I would like to have a motion to take out of table matters, document 31114.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. Councilors, we have this document, and we have the attorneys representing the city in this matter. We need to go into a secret session, and I would like to adjutant a motion to go into a secret session so that we can listen to the attorneys.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and properly second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. We need to... Again, please remain outside, and as soon as we are finished with the secret session, we will come back to continue our meeting.
Okay, motion, I would like to entertain a motion to, I'm sorry?
I don't think we're on yet.
Oh.
Thank you, Council President.
Take care.
It's just not there, it's running there.
Oh, it's running, okay, I'll set. That's okay. No, let's not worry about the television. Councillors, I would like to entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, roll call.
Council Vice President.
Present.
Yes, oh no?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. That's okay, I know you're here. Uh, Council Brunel. Council Kino.
Yes.
Council Monte noted, Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Dumey noted, Council LaPlante.
Yes.
Council Vasquez.
Yes.
And Council President Maldonado.
Yes. We are back, uh, the regular meeting of the City Council. Councillors, I would like to take out of, out of sequence, uh, document three twenty-eight fourteen. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, the ayes have it. Uh, Councillors, um, in, uh, in discussion with, uh, the City Clerk, Mr. Maloney, and with the help of the, our state rep representative, Frank Moran, uh, we were able to get some feedback, uh, information on placing the ballot question of the residency requirement in the elections of, the last election of November. If the council would have requested permission from the state, uh, before June first, we would have been able to place the ballot question, uh, in the estate ballot. But obviously, the decisions that the council made were, uh, made later than that. Uh, so, um, we asked the state whether, uh, we would have the right, the city has the right to place a separate ballot, and they say yes, that we could place a separate ballot, but they required the city to hire two additional employees per present. Uh, so between the printing and the, uh, the printing and the personnel, uh, the cost would have been approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. In addition, um, when voters going into the, uh, into the, uh, poll, into the, uh, uh, voting place, uh, they will get the state ballot first, they will go ahead and vote on the state ballot, on the state election, and then they will have to go back to the table and, uh, pick up the, uh, the ballot, the, uh, the, the ballot question. Obviously, with the expense and the process in which this will take place, it doesn't seem appropriate, uh, to, to do it. And plus, the amount of time that we have left right now to communicate with the public, uh, with the voters is too short to provide enough information, uh, to the citizens, to the citizens of Lawrence about the ballot question and the reasons, uh, the, uh, and the reasons for or against it, uh, uh, which they should consider. In talking to one or two or three Councillors, uh, who were supporting the ballot question, uh, my opinion is that, that we should delay the ballot question, uh, to the year two thousand fifteen, when all Councillors are gonna be, uh, running for election. It will not cost us additional money. We will have plenty of time, uh, to provide information to the public, and we will not have the, uh, the problem of having a separate ballot and having additional personnel. Uh, so what I would like to do is refer, uh, I ask, um, the clerk to, uh, put a document number, uh, to the ballot question, which is document three twenty-eight fourteen. And what I'm going to do is refer this document to the committee as a whole, so that we can continue reviewing, uh, the ballot question, uh, as recommended by the attorney, by the city attorney, uh, and getting ready, uh, and getting prepared to provide enough information, uh, to the citizens of Lawrence so that they can, uh, make a wise decision in voting. Uh, obviously, uh, the ballot question has been, uh, very controversial. Uh, in the past, uh, there are people that are in favor, and they have their own reasons why they're in favor, and there are people who are against it, and obviously, they have their own reasons. So, um, it would be, it would be up to the citizens of Lawrence, uh, to vote and let us know, the City Council and the mayor, how the citizens feel. It is important to understand that, um, because it is a decision of the majority of the City Council, the ballot question is non-binding, okay? And consequently, the mayor still have to sign. Uh, uh, obviously, in my opinion, I will fi- I will find it hard pressed for the mayor to refuse to sign, uh, the, uh, the residency requirement if the majority of the, of the citizens, uh, vote in favor of it. But again, uh, we will get to that point when it comes. So what I would like to do is, um, entertain a motion to delay the, uh, the execution of the ballot question until the election of November fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, uh, questions?
Discussion.
Discussion, yes.
Discussion, that is gonna be retroactive, correct?
Yes, yes.
So what date, Jan-, uh, July first of two thousand fourteen?
That's correct, that's correct.
Um, Council President.
Yes.
Question. There's more information, I thought, regarding the amounts. I think there are a lot of, there's a lot of confusion as to binding or unbinding, but I understand if there's a certain number of votes, that changes?
Yes, if, um, if the council or the citizens, uh, initiate a, a petition, then it would be binding. Uh, but as long as it is a vote of the majority of the council, it's non-binding.
So even on the ballot, just so the people understand, when you place it on the ballot, even though you may, let's just say, it happens, you get a vast majority of people, um, and you get eighty percent of the vote. I know, I know we're about equal, but let's just say.
Whatever the number, if, if they are...
So it, it's insignificant whether you get eighty percent of the vote, whether it becomes a referendum or...
Uh, I'm not sure about that. Again, um, my understanding from the information that provided by the City Clerk is that if, if it is, if it is initiated by the citizens and a fifteen percent, uh, is it?
Fifteen percent of the electorate initiates a petition.
Fifteen percent of the electorate, uh, uh, signed the petition, then it would be binding. It would be, uh, uh, the, the mayor would, would have no option, uh, but to sign it. Uh, but in this particular case, because it is being by the majority of the City Council, uh, it's non-binding, and again, I would, uh, I think the mayor will be hard pressed if, uh, the, uh, if the question ballot, uh, is favorable, the voting is favorable, uh, it would, I think it would be hard pressed for the mayor, and, and again, this is my opinion, uh, to reject the opinion of the citizens.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The vote, just so...
Vote is to, uh, is to delay the execution of the vote taken by the City Council to place on the ballot until the election of two thousand fifteen.
When you say delay, that makes it sound as though we're, we're not gonna have it then, but we're still in support of a ballot initiative in November of two thousand and fifteen.
That's correct, that's correct.
Can we separate that by two and...
I'm sorry?
Can we separate that? Can we vote just to, to, just to say withdrawing that, the dignity of a... You're gonna be sending that down to the Committee on the Whole as a new item, right?
That's correct, yes.
So we're, if we're taking a vote tonight to put it on for two thousand fifteen, why is it even going to the Committee on the Whole?
Oh, because the Committee as a whole will review the language.
Right.
Will continue reviewing, re- reviewing, reviewing the language that is gonna go on the ballot.
But I would recommend making it real clean. In other words, withdrawing the fact that you're gonna have a vote, putting it on the, uh, putting it on the ballot for this November, and, and have that vote. And then you're gonna take this item that's going to be, to put it on the November ballot of two thousand fifteen, and just submit that, like a new document, to the committee. Because what it sounds like right now is that if I vote in favor of this proposal, what that makes it sound to me is though I'm voting it with, for withdrawing it this year, but I'm also voting in favor of putting it in two thousand fifteen. And I'm not sure at this point I'm comfortable making that next step. So if you send it to the committee, then we can have a discussion about how we wanna move it. I'm just not...
No, I think, I think that's a, that's a good, uh, yes.
There's a new number.
Well, yes.
That's a number.
Yes, a new number.
Yes. Okay. Are there any other questions, any, uh, so, uh, again, uh...
As the...
The motion was...
As the author of the motion...
Yeah, can, can you change, can you...
I would like to, yes.
Withdraw the motion and then re...
I would like to withdraw the motion and re, re, um, re-submit a motion, first, um, withdrawing the previous vote. Which was to, um, place the residency rule question on the ballot for November of two thousand fourteen.
Okay, that's, that's the motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, are there any other questions or discussion on that matter? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, okay.
Now I further move that, um, we, what, do I have to? Do we have to vote on anything?
That's it, that's it.
No, 'cause we're just sending the item.
I'm referring, I'm referring document three twenty-eight to the Committee as a whole with the purpose of reviewing the language, uh, and then coming back with another recommendation or taking, uh, uh, making us another decision in regard to the ballot question.
Also providing opportunity for any considerations that people would like to, um, put forward?
Yes, definitely.
As we go along and make sure that everybody feels that they were heard before we place it. And, um, I think that, given that you have a majority on the council, I just want this on record, a majority on the council who are for it, um, but you, but we don't have the full council for it, that, um, actually sending it to the voters to make the decision is, is an honorable thing to do.
I agree with you, I agree with you. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, let's move on with, uh, poll participation, Mr. Clerk.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, public, sorry, public hearing, uh, document thirty-three thirteen.
It's okay, we're here to help you.
There's gonna be public, public participation anyway, so, yes. Excuse me.
Okay, you wanna...
We're gonna go into public hearing, so if you give us a few minutes.
Just to read it.
Okay? Yes.
Document thirty-three, two thousand thirteen, notice hereby given the City Council to hold a public hearing Tuesday, September sixteen, two thousand fourteen, in Council Chambers, two hundred Clumman Street, at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of city laws concerning to, uh, chapter eight point three oh to the municipal code mediation of foreclosure on or occupied residential properties. Amendment to said chapter eight point three oh shall be by addition, deletion, and/or insertion presented for consideration of approval by the city of Lawrence City Council. A complete and unabridged copy of the proposed men- amended ordinance referenced herein was made available for public viewing, examination, and copying upon request at the office of the City Clerk any business day from eight thirty A.M. to four thirty P.M. the city clerk any business day from eight thirty A. M. to four thirty P. M. Or such hours said officer city clerk may be open for, to the public. The copy of said proposed amended ordinances is also available and was made available on the city of Lawrence website, as cited under the section entitled City Council and Public Hearings, persons wishing they were heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Is anyone in the public that would like to address to document thirty-three thirteen? Please identify yourself and your address.
Good evening, members of the Lawrence City Council. My name is Arthur Bryan. I live at twenty-three Tudor Avenue in Lawrence. I'm a member of Our Lady of Good Council Parish, and Our Lady of Good Council Parish is a member of the Miramac Valley Project. Over a year ago, we came before the council to ask you to approve a foreclosure mediation ordinance, which you did, and we are most grateful to you for its passage. But its implementation has run into a few logistical problems. I would like to review them with you at this time. I start by saying these changes have been suggested by the Northeast Justice Center in consultation with the city of Lynn, which is also implementing its own mediation program. The first problem concerns the requirements for the mediation program manager. Our current ordinance requires the program manager to be a neutral, nonprofit organization with offices in Lawrence and experienced in the mediation of the residential foreclosure process. The problem is that Lawrence does not have a neutral, nonprofit to serve as the program manager. The Lawrence nonprofits that are involved in resolving foreclosure disputes are all advocates for the homeowners. None of them is neutral. Using them will invite a lawsuit from the banks, so an alternative is needed. We are advised that the best way to correct this problem is to amend the ordinance by deleting the word nonprofit and to also delete the words with offices in Lawrence. The Lynn City Council wrote its ordinance without these words to avoid the problem that Lawrence faces. Lynn then selected Massachusetts Dispute Resolution Services, an organization with offices in Boston and Salem, to serve as Lynn's mediation program manager. Massachusetts Dispute Resolution Services has written to Mayor Rivera to indicate an interest in providing its services to Lawrence. This change is easy to make so that there is an effective program manager. Another problem concerns the method of notifying homeowners about the mediation program. The current ordinance states that the city will send notices about the mediation program to homeowners, but only after the city gets a copy of the letter that banks are required to file with the Division of Banks at the start of the foreclosure process. The problem is that the Division of Banks cannot give the city copies in a timely manner. The Division of Banks does not file these letters by city and town. It also does not have the staff to search the notices for Lawrence homeowners in the time required. Lynn also faced this problem, so we feel the best solution is to amend the ordinance to require the banks to send a copy of the letter directly to the city at the same time that the bank sends a copy to the Division of Banks. The city will then be able to send out the program notices in a timely manner. The Northeast Justice Center also recommends that Lawrence add a just cause eviction provision to its foreclosure mediation ordinance, just as the city of Lynn has done. This addition would help to prevent most bank evictions after foreclosure. The new clause allows banks to evict occupants after a foreclosure only if they have just cause. It excludes small banks and landlords. It also excludes situations where the bank has signed a purchase and sale agreement with a bona fide third party on a theory that the property will become occupied. Just cause includes not paying rent, causing damages, creating a nuisance, interfering with neighbors, criminal activity, and not allowing access for repairs and inspections. This provision would be a strong element to meet the goal of preventing the problems that arise from vacant properties. So far this year alone, we at Miramac Valley Project have followed up on over sixty legal newspaper notices regarding possible foreclosure and public auction in our city. Some of the people we visited were totally unaware that they were facing possible foreclosure. Others, who were under the impression that they were expecting a modification to their mortgage terms, were surprised to learn that their homes were facing public auction. In other situations, we discovered that we were too late to try to help since the buildings were already vacant. Others told us how the lenders asked that they submit necessary papers over and over again without any resolution concerning a modification. We strongly believe that this effective amendment to the foreclosure mediation program would be a definite improvement to aid homeowners to stay in their homes. We hope you agree and approve this amendment. Thank you for all you do.
Before you leave, do you have copies of the document that you just read? Do you have copies?
Of your testimony.
Of the document that you have read?
Copies of the ordinance?
No, copies of your suggestions.
Of the speech?
Yes.
Sure. I can give you a copy.
Okay. Can you give it to our secretary so that she can make copy of that? Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee, um, well, no, let me, let me.
This, um, can I just make one?
Yes, go ahead.
This group is, my back, I'm sorry. This group has been unbelievable, Mr. Bryan and the attorneys that work with him. And I, I don't mean to speak, Council Vasquez might be a better member of the group, because I know he's been extremely involved with that. So many times items get delayed because our city attorney is very busy. And also, we as councillors, to do the research and the writing, to redraft something, it's a lot of work. I mean, they, not only do they give us the ordinance the first time around, but when they noticed a problem in other municipalities, they got us the corrective legislation to fix it right away. And we all have a copy in our packages of this April twenty-fourth memo that clearly breaks down the four items that they want us to make the modifications of. It's just such an amazing group of people that do all their own research, all their own drafting. They've been a true asset to us as a council. Rarely do you get a group that comes in and does the level of, of work and the quality of the work that they do.
Excuse me, Lilia, can you make a ten?
And the best part or, is who they're advocating for. They're advocating for the poorest of the poor, the homeowner who's losing their house. I, I just give them so much credit, but I think Mr. Bryan's notes would be invaluable to all of us. But at the same time, there is an August, excuse me, April fourth memo in our packages that does pretty much outline.
April twenty-fourth, yeah.
I'm thinking fourth month, I'm, I have to pour my brain. But that memo is in our packages, and it is outlined pretty clearly the four changes that they recommend.
And the July first.
It seems to me that if, if there are things that we should change, the document that we were supposed to approve tonight, that we probably should delay the approval.
No, 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 the, this is, this is the approval, we're approving his changes.
Oh, with the changes? Oh, okay.
With the changes, yeah.
Okay. Then let me, let me continue and, and ask anyone in the public that would like to speak to this matter. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good evening, councillors. My name is Mark Potvin. I'm an attorney with the Northeast Justice Center who has been involved in drafting the amendments. Our office is at fifty Island Street here in Lawrence. We were formerly known as the Northeast Neighborhood Legal Services. This past year, we went through a merger with the Miramac Valley Legal Services Agency. Our two agencies have been around for forty-five years, we've now merged. So we have offices in Lowell, Lawrence, and in Lynn. All right, so that's how we know very much about what's going on in Lynn. As, as an organization, we are also a member of the Miramac Valley Project, and we have collaborated with the Miramac Valley Project for years to improve the greater community. We have been providing legal assistance to the Miramac Valley Project for the last few years to tackle the foreclosure crisis. We helped draft the first amendments to the foreclosure ordinance that councillor, that the council passed several years ago, thanks to councillor Nilka, and so we did our first amendments to it. We tried to implement it over the last year, and we saw that there were the two problems that Mr. Bryan brought to your attention. So now we helped draft the second ones, and to tell you the truth, we based it a lot on the experience of Lynn. They have been in front of this issue and have been tackling the issues, and so what you saw, what we presented, in many ways mimics what is in the Lynn ordinance. Before providing it tonight, we want you to know that we, a copy of our proposal went to the city attorney and also to the mayor's office to get their input as well. And out of this, we have three recommended minor changes since the draft was first submitted to the ordinance committee. They're very minor changes that we think should happen. But first, I, I've got to say, the foreclosure crisis still exists in Lawrence. Every week, we see banks evicting former homeowners in housing. Vacant housing is still a trouble for the neighborhoods. The city needs to amend the ordinance to effectively help struggling homeowners avert foreclosure and to prevent more vacant buildings from arising in the city. Good faith, face-to-face mediation between banks and homeowners before foreclosure conducted by a professional mediator is in the best interest of Lawrence, of its residents, and the community. Mediation is the best means for homeowners to explore modifications and other reasonable alternatives to foreclosure. It's meant to help preserve the American dream. As Mr. Bryan described, there's two main problems, and I think he did an excellent job of explaining what they are. That we need to require the banks to send the right-to-cure notice that they now send to the Division of Banks and to the homeowner, and need to require them to send it to the city. When we drafted the ordinance, we took what Lynn had, and there it said it would be sent to the city attorney. In talking to the mayor's office, they have suggested instead that it be sent to the housing manager, who works within the Community Development Department. We think that's a wise idea, and we would support that change to the amendment. Second, as Mr. Bryan explained, we need to get a professional company to come in and manage this program, and by striking those words about it being a nonprofit and from inside Lawrence, you can do that. As he explained, Massachusetts Dispute Resolution Services is very, is, is running this program in Lynn. They've done about sixty-nine mediations already. They have saved a lot of people's homes, helped people get right refinancing to stop the foreclosure. And in a couple of cases, they've, they've negotiated actual deed and lose, where instead of foreclosure, the homeowner gives a deed to the bank in exchange for relocation money. They can provide the services here if they are the best entity, and if the city decides that that's who should be selected, that would be a great idea. But you can open up to anybody who could do this, but there's one. The third major change is to add the just cause protections to the city's ordinance, and it's, the purpose is to limit vacancies in the city. Lawrence has too many vacant properties. The city's consolidated plan found that eight percent of the housing stock is vacant. We're talking two thousand housing units. This two thousand and ten census found the same thing. Vacant properties are a health and safety nuisance. They drive down property values all around them. Just cause protection is designed to stem the problem of vacant homes after foreclosure. It keeps houses occupied until the bank finds someone who wants to live there. Miramac Valley Project knows that there is some fear of possible abuse of such, of such a clause, but the amendment was drafted in such a way to prevent any abuse or shenanigans. As Mr. Bryan explained, the banks can still evict occupants who refuse to pay rent or a use, or a reasonable use and occupancy charge. Banks are allowed to evict anyone who is causing damages, engaging in criminal activity, interfering with the quiet enjoyment of any neighbor, being a nuisance. Banks can even evict occupants who refuse to allow access to come in and view the apartment or the, the house or to make repairs. When we sent this off to the city attorney, attorney body recommended two changes, and we support those. One is he found a typo. Instead of the word non, it said nun or vice versa, and so we, we've, we've suggested that that be corrected. And he also wanted to strip a clause in, in the amendment that says notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary. And we believe that that language is probably not needed, and if the city council believes that it should be stripped, it could be stripped without really affecting the ordinance itself. In closing, I just want to say that the amendments are good for Lawrence. They are needed to get mitigation, mediation going and to stem the vacant property problem here in the city. Please support the amendments. Thank you. And then I do have a fact sheet on what I just presented, if you'd like to see that.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to this document? Again, please identify yourself and your address.
Kathy Ronge, thirty-two Draken Street. I'm not here to support, to ask for, to you to support or not support this, but what I'm saying is, there are still legal issues in this. In fact, I just printed out an article where it appears that like on September fourth, the, the issue of Springfield's foreclosure ordinance was just argued before the state judicial supreme court, whatever it's called. And it seems fairly obvious to me that if you support this or, that if you try and implement this, we're, we're just going to get added to the list of cities that are getting sued by the big banks. So what I'm, I'm wondering is if there's some way to maybe pass this ordinance and not get sued by the big banks, because that's going to cost money again, and our legal department is stretched fairly thin. Then that, that's, I mean, you know, I really don't know the ins and outs of it, but I, I would assume that if the banks say they're going to sue you, it's going to start costing money. assume that if the banks say they're going to sue you, it's going to start costing money no matter what. So that's what I'm suggesting, that if there's some way that you could maybe support this but put it on hold until these other cases get settled, so then you would know if you were going to get sued or not by implementing it.
Anybody else in the audience? If there's none, I'm closing public participation on this matter, councilors.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve and waive the 30 days with the proposed amendments.
There's a motion to flow out to approve and waive the 30 days. It has been properly second discussion.
Discussion. So one of the speakers here had a question regarding potential losses by, by the banks. Do we know, because Lynn's been, been held out as being the example of this, has, do we know if Lynn has been at all sued by any of the banks on this issue?
Will you come forward to the microphone, please?
Yes, there has been a suit against the city of Lynn and the city of Worcester. The first suit was against the city of Springfield, and there, the federal judge out of Springfield ruled in favor of the city and said that the ordinance adopted there is fully constitutional and fits within the city's police powers. And we believe this, my opinion is that this ordinance would be, would be similarly ruled upon. The case that was just mentioned before, the state supreme court, is an appeal of that decision. The federal court sent a question to the state supreme court to be answered, and that's what was argued last week. But so far, every court that's looked at this has found it to be constitutional and a valid use of the city's police power to protect the citizens, the health and welfare, and to fight against nuisances, nuisance properties.
Mr. Blen?
Yeah, so, yes, if we go forward with this today, and in fact, the, the banks are successful in their suit against the city of Lynn, then we would then, I would imagine, they would probably look to us as the next place they would look to for a suit. So we probably would need to, at some point, revisit this if, in fact, Lynn's, Lynn's particular ordinance is challenged and they lose their challenge. Hold on. Despite the fact that Springfield, you know, there's precedent there, and it's very similar.
It is possible.
But I have not seen the complaint. I don't know what the, you know, what the nuance of that particular case is.
It was a little different than the Springfield claim. One of the claims that they brought is a U.S. contract clause claim, that it violates the federal constitutional contract laws, that contracts between private parties cannot be impaired. I think that's a pretty weak argument, given where the supreme court has ruled on those issues in the past. But I will say in Lynn that the city there has, has made an agreement with the Harvard Legal Aid Bureau to represent the city, so that there, the city is not having to foot the bill for the legal defense of the city, and our office could consider doing the same here, should there be a lawsuit against the city. Of course, that would be up to the city to decide.
My other question is, I know that we're looking to suspend the rules essentially and, and not have the 30-day requirement. Can I ask why? I'm going to make a statement, and I'm going to ask why. I can understand oftentimes that we look to, we look to eliminate the 30-day requirement, especially when it deals with handicap placards, when it's clear that there's something there. But there's a reason why we have in our rules that 30-day window there. It gives a chance for us, for this thing to terminate a little bit. If this thing gets out and people, I'm not saying this specifically, but in general, the 30-day requirements, if there's anything that's, that people could have a chance to review and come back to us, at least we have a chance to modify it or correct them before it actually hits the, hits the books afterwards. And that 30-day requirement, I think, is a good way to have, to give us a chance, or give the public a chance to, to let the thing, I like to call it breathe a little bit before we get to it. So, in this particular case, and while I would be in favor of the, of the, of the motion, I would just ask the, the author of the motion to not place the 30-day, repeal the 30-day requirement on that, and just go through the normal channels on this.
Mr. Vasquez, would you like, would you consider removing that from your motion?
No, no, I think that there's this, and we have to look at it as an emergency for the city of Lawrence. We continue to have a foreclosure crisis that needs to be addressed, and I think that the, the motions and the amendments as presented are very clear and concise. I do understand the concerns that have been presented to us of any potential losses, but as we have heard, you know, from the council that is representing Merrimack Valley Project, Neighborhood Legal Services, and the Northeast Justice Center, we are in a very good position to go forward with this particular amendments for the ordinance. It has not been implemented. We've had it in the books for over a year, and the implementation hasn't been possible due to the fact that these changes were needed. A lot of work has been put into this for a couple of months, particularly from the Merrimack Valley Project, and I feel that it is important that we go ahead with a 30-days waiver and allow them to be able to continue moving ahead and, and let the administration move forward with this, start to look for a mediator. I know a mediator has been mentioned as to potential, that doesn't mean that anyone at, at this moment is a mediator for the city. We will open it, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure, and allow anyone to come before the city and say, "Look, we would, we would like to offer our services," and start this mediation process. It's a crisis, and we need to treat it as such. We need to be respectful of our residents and, and go ahead and say, "Look, we're going to have your back in times of need, and we will not let this get off our hands." So unfortunately, I would not accept the amendment.
I second the motion, and I seconded, I waived the 30 days.
Mr. Blen?
I just want to make, I just want to make just a brief comment. Can we, as a body, just think about this a little bit? We're just going to pass, and I'll vote in favor, because I don't want to be looked upon as not being in favor of it and casting a no vote. We're looking as though, because of this 30-day thing, while it's unfair, but, but I will...
You can, if you want to make, I just want to give some information.
Sorry?
I just want to give some information.
Go ahead.
Which is, if the author rejects the, the change, you could also make a motion, and then it would be, depending on, you know, what support you get, then you can have it stripped.
Sure. So my, my sense is that we, as a body, need to figure out, look at all these items we're voting on tonight. Everybody can say that each one of these is something that's an emergency. Each one of these, we want to have something done immediately. Each one of these, we don't want to wait 30 days. So we, as a body, need to really reflect, is this 30-day requirement really important? Or are we just, essentially, almost all the time now, it's been part of our standard procedures, that we're constantly utilizing, this is, everything is an emergency. Now, once we start doing it all the time, it's the boy that cries wolf. When is it truly an emergency? This is, you know, is it a matter of convenience? Is it a matter of study? What's, what are we determining whether or not it's a true emergency? So I just throw that out there in a big thing. I'm not looking at this specifically. I'm just, I'm challenging all of us, council president, to really determine what really is an emergency as we go forward. Listen, I, I'm not sure when I get the votes on putting this through, and I don't want to put the councillor in a bad spot on this. I already have.
No, I don't think you've put me in a bad spot. I actually think that you have given me the opportunity to, to fight for the residents that have an emergency out there in, in the community of Lawrence. I don't think that I'm in a bad position today. I'm actually in a much better position based on the comments that you just made. It's an emergency for the city, and we should treat it as such.
And I just want to make sure, one more comment. We are having a housing study that's been done. It's, it's in the middle of being completed or working through, and I think that we're going to be getting, before this city council, various components of this housing study. We're all going to have a chance to dive into it, talk about it in, in greater detail. And so I, I leave it at that.
You don't.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a...
Ms. Alvarez, and then...
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, council president. I just want to say that I have, I have felt, and I voiced it a few months ago, that we shouldn't continue to wait for 30 days every time, because it seems that there were, there was occasion where it wasn't an emergency and we were still doing that. And, and I did mention it, but I do think, however, that this situation is an emergency, given that people are looking at foreclosure, and we need to make sure that those people who are looking at foreclosure get the services and support they need to be able to prevent that. So they can either prevent the foreclosure or do the deed-in-lau, or do a quick sale, whatever it is that will help that family get out of that situation in a, in a good way. But I have questions for Attorney Posit with your...
Will you come forward, please?
Permission, council president? And I, I want everybody to just notice that it's been years and years and years that he has given his legal services to our community, and I really appreciate that, and we can see it in his gray hair that, that it hasn't been easy. But I have a question for you. Back in 2009, then there was community, the director of planning, Sweeney, who, along with other members of the community development office and people outside of it, they came up with some ordinance that had to do with how we would deal with the banks in terms of them taking care of vacant properties. So there was issues with putting down summons, what is it, summons of 300 or 400 daily if they did not close it off properly, if they did not keep it need, because they're the owners now, so they have to maintain the property. Have you, I mean, I've been not too on top of it, and so I, I'm not sure if we have been implementing that as a city.
I don't know anything about that ordinance. I don't know if it's been implemented. I don't know if there's been attempts to implement it. I'm just...
I'd like to go back to that and, and...
Just some information. Recently, we approved a grant, a CBBG grant, to one of our own departments that is not only documenting abandoned properties, foreclosed properties, but also the state attorney had assigned a group of lawyers to work with the city to place those properties under receivership. Exactly. And so there's a number of properties right now that are, that are under receivership.
And I'd like to, council president, with your permission, at some point, I think, and I'll make it available to you, that we should revisit that ordinance that we have already to deal with that third part of what you and, and the darling, Mr. Bryan, has told us today regarding the problems with vacant property.
Be happy to look at it.
Yeah. And it was, it had a lot of teeth in it, you know, it was talking about how we could hold them responsible. And so far, there was no, when we, when they were doing it at that time, they didn't receive any complaints or, you know, threat of being sued. So maybe that, we should look at it again and see if we can get it moving. The other concern that I have is, I know they don't have to have offices, the, the professional group.
Mediation program manager.
The mediation program.
Well, under the current ordinance, it says they have to have an office in Lawrence. That's what's called one of the problems.
Right, but we're going to, but we're now supporting that that doesn't have to happen in order for us to have a neutral professional group that's looking and helping to arrive at some kind of agreement between parties. So would it be okay or something to make room available to them for days in Lawrence that they would come? I mean, is that...
They certainly can hold the mediation sessions here in Lawrence. There's no, there's nothing to prohibit the mediation sessions from taking place here.
Right, and that would happen in the courts?
It could happen in the courts. It could happen at the registry of deeds. It could happen in the public library. It could happen here at city hall. I think it's up to the program manager to figure out where is an appropriate place to hold these mediations.
Okay. But that's good.
Yes.
That's really good, that we could sort of prevent people having to travel too far.
Absolutely.
You know, who already, sometimes they're stretching out, taking out the coins from the drawers and, you know, and sweeping up the floor and looking in the sofa...
Trying to get the quarters.
To buy some eggs and milk and, you know, so, who don't, who are not, you know, it's the working poor that don't, don't have food stamps, and they don't have, you know, so they have to stretch every dollar. So if we could make that happen, that would be great. And I would also like to look at the possibility of getting some organization off the ground and trained to do this kind of stuff in, in, here in Lynn or Lawrence, you know, or Lowell, you know. It would be great if we can get that done for the future. So I just want to say that, again, I echo the words of, of my colleague, Bernal, Councilor Bernal, that you guys are fantastic for staying on top of it. You know, not many groups do. They come in, they, you know, they get the ordinance done, but then there's no follow-up, and at times, we don't really know, because we're like creating all these ordinances every day, and unless people tell us, we don't know if they're, if the implementation is working. So thank you so much.
Councilors, thank you for your kind words.
Thank you all for being here.
Okay.
Thank you, council president.
I think that we should send a correspondence to Ms. Camargo, who is documenting the list of abandoned properties and, and taking actions, and maybe she can give us an update on what is happening with that. So if it is okay with you guys, we can, we should send...
She was here when the, when the ordinance was created, Sweeney?
Yes, yes.
If we could put that in the letter, if she can give us some information on how that ordinance is working or not, to her, you know, to the professionals.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, council president. I had, I had more of a, of a comment also. I, I want to thank Mr. Bryan and, and everyone for taking the time, because it's not an easy task to visit 60 homes. But if we were all paying attention here, he said that in the 60 homes that they visited, that, you know, half the people, they didn't even know that a modification was being made to their home, one. Two, they didn't know that their homes were being phased up for public auction. And three, some of the homes that were visited were already vacant. So if we were all listening, I'm going to say again, then we should have noticed that there is an urgency to quit on the 30 days, because in 30 days, what happens? Someone could be put out of their home. It only takes 30 days to get a notice that says to you this, or that they have the right to tell you that within 30 days, this property needs to be vacated. I mean, it's all fun, you know, fine and dandy for those of us who can pay our mortgage on time, and for those of us who don't have a worry of, "How am I going to pay my mortgage?" or, "I have an empty vacant apartment now." And now, you know, this was part of the supplement that I had to pay my mortgage, and now I can't. Or something has, a damage has happened to the property because of it's, it's being vacant, and now the property owner has to put money into this to try and upkeep it, because now it can't be rented because of the damages that are done. Or that they need some monies to be able to fix and rehab the property that they have in front of them, and therefore, these mediations need to have happened. So once again, I'm going to say, if we were all listening, then we would have known that this is a problem. And for us to sit here and say that it's not, it's not urgent, within 30 days, you can be put out of your home, and you want to say that's not urgent? Yeah. Well, it's, like, I'm, I'm going to repeat it once again and say that it's nice to know that, you know that your mortgage will be paid next month, but for us that don't know if our mortgage may be or not be paid next month, and, and that's what we're here for, to protect those people, you know, we definitely need to have an urgency on this and definitely exempt the 30 days. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nobody else, again, the motion is to approve the ordinance and to waive the 30 days. Let's take a vote, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Council President? Council President?
Yes.
I, I would like to make a suggestion also. I know that the public is here, you know, to, to, to speak when it's their turn for them to speak. And I know that, that opinions can be, have had, but I will make the motion, if the outbursts continue to happen, so that any persons disrupting the way our meetings are going by being disrespectful in their disruption, to be removed from council chambers. With the laughing and the disrespect and the little comments, we don't need to put up with it and as a council and as a body, we can have you not be part of this body anymore. Take that into consideration with your comments. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, Document 15014.
Document 150, 2014, notices hereby given the City Council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, September 16, 2014, in council chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition to accept-
We could do that.
Order. Continue.
Concerning a petition to accept the part or whole of a way known as access and/or egress to the road from Pemberton Park, further described in reference as Tax Map 125, Lot 32, in the city of Lawrence, more particularly described in a meets and bounds description provided in the advertisement. Above description is also referenced and known as Map 125, Lot 32, and contains approximately 17,087 square feet. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on September 8.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address Document 15014? If there is none, closing the public participation on this document. Counselors, what is your wish?
Council President, in light of the recent discussion, I do feel badly making this part of my motion, but I wanted to make a motion to accept the egress road as a public way. And I wanted to specifically ask that we do waive the 30 days. If you were at the Housing Committee meeting, you do know that the abutter has a financing issue and it specifically is contingent upon them having access to a quote "public way," which they technically don't have at this moment. So by getting this approved as a public way, the abutter will be able to get their financing and complete a project which will benefit the city. So I make that in form of a motion.
I second.
Motion has been made improperly. Second, any discussions or questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, Document 25114.
Document 251, 2014. Notices hereby given the City Council a hold of public hearing, Tuesday, September 16, in council chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed consideration for the adoption of rules and regulations of the Water and Sewer Department for the city of Lawrence as presented for consideration of approval to the City Council for the city of Lawrence pursuant to the provisions of Section 13.04070 regarding rules and regulations of the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence. Said proposed rules and regulations, under consideration, concern definitions and terms, authority, and rights of the Water Department, liability, water rates, and billing, water meters, radio, read systems, water services connections, maintenance, water means, fire protection, and cross connection control ordinances. A complete and unabridged copy of the proposed amendment to the rules and regulations referenced herein, as presented to the Lawrence City Council for consideration of approval, were made available. A public viewing, examination, and copying upon requests presented to the officer of city clerk during business hours and business days from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. In such hours, the officer of city clerk may be available and open to the public. Copies of the proposed rules and regulations were also made available on the city website under the section entitled City Council Public Hearings. Persons wishing to be afforded, wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on September 8.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this document? Please identify yourself and the address.
My name is Ismael Rondon, City Hall Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts, 01843. Hay, el documento, hay algunas partes del documento que pienso que entran en conflicto con algunas normas o leyes estatales. Además, va a modificar por completo, por lo menos dos códigos de la ciudad. Y a ustedes habían dicho que-
Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on.
I'll gladly translate for the, for the-
Would you like to go up there and translate for him?
Sure, I'd gladly do that. ¿Va a hablar mucho? Lo hago desde aquí.
Puede hacerlo desde ahí. Soy, voy a ser bastante específico. Voy a citar los puntos del documento.
Okay.
Trata de hacer pausa para que él pueda traducir.
Me puede repetir todo desde el principio. So I asked him to repeat what he had said since the beginning so I could translate.
Hay algunas partes del documento que entran en conflicto con, que podrían entrar en conflicto.
There are certain parts in the document that could enter into conflict.
Con leyes estatales o legislaciones estatales.
With certain state regulations or state laws.
Le pido que consideren también, I would like for you to also consider, que modificaría el código 013-04.
That it will modify the code 0304.
013-04 and 013-08.
And 013-08.
Y en el, la reunión del comité de relaciones intergubernamentales-
And in the ordinance and intergovernmental meeting, se le dijo al comité- Members of the committee were told-
que no, que la ci, que el departamento de agua no tenía-
That the water department did not have-
un instrumento legal-
A legal instrument.
...para operar o hacer cumplir ciertos, ciertas, ciertos trabajos.
To operate or comply with certain type of work.
Y eso es falso porque si tiene un instrumento legal-
¿Me repito de nuevo?
Eso es falso, si tiene un instrumento legal el departamento de agua.
And that is false because they do have a, an instrument in which they could work with.
Esa fue la motivación para que ustedes vieran el documento y trataran de aprobarlo rápido.
That was the reason for you to be able to see and review this document and treat it in, in a quick matter.
Repito, eso es falso.
I repeat, it is false.
Lo que no hay es una norma-
What we do not have is a norm.
Ni en la ciudad, ni en las leyes generales de Massachusetts-
Neither in the city nor the Massachusetts general laws.
Que reconozcan el M D U como algo necesario.
That recognize the M D U as something that is necessary.
Fíjense en las definiciones, en la primera parte del documento, las definiciones.
Review the definitions that are within the first part of the document.
Ni siquiera ahí figura el M D U.
Not even there, you will find an M D U definition.
Aparece la definición del medidor.
You have a definition of a meter.
Pero no aparece el M D U.
But you do not have an M D U.
Solo en el cuerpo del documento sí aparece.
Only within the body of the actual document you will find the word.
Pero entremos en materia porque hay contradicciones incluso con la, con el city charter de la ciudad.
But let's talk about the matter itself because this is in conflict with the city charter of the city of Lawrence.
Título 2 punto 3.
Title 2.3.
Si lo tienen, pueden ver. ¿No tienen el documento?
If you have the document in front of you, you will be able to see it.
I don't have a copy, pero I have a resume, yo tengo un resumen de los puntos. The document number 251, el que aparece publicado por, como, por el, por el city council. Me dijeron que era el oficial que aparecía publicado, que podía usar ese.
So it's, it says that he's referencing the, the document that has been published.
Council President, through you, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. We have, we have Bryan here, who's our, Mr. Peña, who's our water commissioner. These are questions, you know, and, and points that have been made to us previously that maybe he can come up and kind of clarify instead of it being a re-explanation of the points and, and what needs to happen here tonight. So instead of it being something that's drawn out, that we have Bryan here, that maybe we can ask him pertinent questions regarding what Mr. Rondon has to say regarding the document.
Yeah, what I would like to do is allow him to finish and then Bryan can probably address those concerns.
Okay, are we clear on what those concerns are?
Well, because we kind of-
Go ahead.
Through, through the year, I mean, I've been hearing Mr. Rondon come in front of us and, I mean, he's been trying to, he's been giving us information, even, even when he came, when the whole floor, I think, and everything came out, like, he's been on this, like, for, for a while now. And if we've all been listening to the concerns, then we know that what he's, where he's coming from is the, the local laws and the state laws, how they are clashing instead of being in conjunction.
Can you give us an example of how they clash? Because they don't clash.
Well, this is, this is, this is, this is why I'm trying to say that we need to just, this is what he's been saying, so that we can clarify it, so that he doesn't just continue to tell us, this is the documents that I'm giving you and now, because he has given it to us before, so what he's trying to tell us now is that, okay, now I've done it this way for you, a further clarification, so that you can understand where I'm coming from. So basically, what he's telling us is that if we didn't get it before, he's trying to clarify it a little more so that we can understand where he's coming from. And so, since Mr. Peña's here, that way, everything could be clarified all in together instead of the-
Sure.
That's nice, but maybe they should just let him finish.
That's, that's what I was thinking of, the, let him finish and then we can address the specific concerns and Mr. Peña can come forward.
Okay. Te puedo continuar.
Go ahead.
No le voy a hacer perder el tiempo, voy a ser muy específico y preciso.
I will be, I will not try to waste your time. I'm gonna try to be as specific and precise as possible.
Tomen el documento y yo voy a señalar-
To take the document that has been presented to you and I will signal to you.
Cuáles son los puntos específicos que yo creo que deben revisar ustedes.
The points that I believe that you should revise.
Yo emitiré mi opinión, si estoy equivocado, por favor déjenmelo saber.
El eco, no puedes entenderlo.
Si estoy equivocado, cuando le señale algún punto, díganme que estoy errado, si estoy errado, por favor.
If I am mistaken in one of the points that I'm presenting, please let me know that I am mistaken.
El título 2 punto 3, véanlo, por favor.
Title 2.3, please take a look at it. Dos punto, 2 punto 3 de dónde?
No. Título, hay varios títulos, si ven el índice del documento, no entiendo, o sea, el documento está, el que yo, el que vi en la computadora, que me dijeron que era el mismo, está, tiene un índice.
So if you look at the index of the, the document, of Document 251, in the index, you will find the different articles. Okay?
Council President.
En nosotros tenemos 2, A, B, y C, pero no tenemos 2 punto 3.
Okay. El título 2, me puede usted decir sobre qué versá?
So, Title 2-
A ver si es el mismo que tenemos, o sea, el que está en números romanos, el título.
The title under Roman numbers, the one that I have, and I believe the one that all the counselors have, reads authority and rights of water and sewer department. A ese le está haciendo usted referencia.
Sí, el que se refiere, y específicamente al punto que se refiere, a que el departamento de agua puede cambiar o modificar las normas sin el consentimiento del consejo.
That's the, the article that I am specifically referring to.
Porque está en contra del city charter.
Because this is against the city charter.
I believe that we discussed that, if you recall, that we made an amendment to that, that it needed approval to make any changes? Yes?
Hold your respect, he sounds like Mr. Rondon for two and a half hours last Thursday and told me that that was amended.
Okay.
Sí, diga, mason presidente.
That was Wednesday, wasn't it?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Diga, mason presidente.
A ti se te explicó que hubo un cambio en eso, indicando que requería la aprobación del Consilio y que ellos eran como dos horas y media contigo en relación a eso.
No, me dijeron que iba, que había que cambiarlo, pero no lo veo cambiado en la computadora, yo debo venir aquí con el documento oficial. ¿Se cambió?
I was told that it was gonna be changed, but I, I don't see the change.
Las cosas no se manejan así, pienso, ¿no?
That's not how we run things here.
Porque ustedes van a probar ese error, entonces van a probarlo habiendo leído ese error. Ustedes tienen el nuevo, el cambio, el cambiado.
Because it will be approved without it being-
No, está en la computa, está en, en la página de la ciudad. Yo traje un resumen para no consumirle tiempo.
I brought the, I, I'm giving you a summary to try not to consume time. Council President, could I make a suggestion?
Let me, just for a second, is this information?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We were aware about the last Thursday meeting.
Yeah.
And I think it was extended, I think, longer than two hours. But I think in order for us just to be conscious that we should, otherwise we're gonna be here until 4 o'clock tonight. Why we don't make Mr. Bryan to come forward and he can answer all the question that I'm sure he is not aware, what, what is the specific point that he's trying to make? Because what it looked like now-
It's like we are all in a different page. We not quite understand what he's trying to point us. And it's important, not only for him, but all the publics who are here in the, the meeting, we need to pass all that information. Because, like I say, he was very specific when he said that he doesn't want us to waste time. But, you know, the way it looks now, we are gonna be here all night.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I just want to remind, we are in a, in a public hearing now, so in reality, as much as we do have questions, I have questions myself for Mr. Rondon, but I think that we shouldn't be asking the questions in the public hearing section because that's the public's opportunity to, to talk. So I would suggest that we allow Mr. Rondon to, to express himself.
To continue and conclude.
And after he's done expressing himself, if we have any questions of understanding his message, maybe we could ask, but let him participate in the public hearing because it's his public hearing.
But he's asking question.
But, but the questions, I think, are more rhetorical.
Let him ask all his questions and then we can answer all his questions.
Councilor Baske, he's asking question.
But I, I believe that the questions are more rhetorical rather than him looking for a response at the second. And I think that that's an opportunity for us to, to write down the questions and answer it, once we make a motion whether or not we are looking to approve.
Yeah, I agree with you, but the question to ourselves, do we have the answer? We have the right person who we can refer to.
Mr. Peña might have the answer.
But that's what I meant, like, if he's gonna be asking question that we don't have the answer, we can make the person who's gonna be giving him the answer, because this is not the first time. This has been going on for a long time.
Okay. What I suggest, hold on, hold on, because we can, we can be here all night going back and forth. Let Mr. Rondon finish. Please make notes of the question that he's making, okay? And then we can ask Mr. Peña to come forward and answer those questions for us, if there are answers, and whether there are any changes or problems that exist in the language right now, and whether we should make any changes, okay? So let's, again, because if we go back and forth, we're gonna be, we're gonna be here the whole night. Señor Rondon, no le vamos a contestar ninguna pregunta, simplemente exprese su punto de vista y después, cuando el consejo comience a hablar, entonces vamos al tener al señor Peña para que conteste las preguntas, okay?
Le agradezco muchísimo.
Continúe y sea breve, por favor, para que podamos concluir y concluir- para que podamos concluir y contestar las preguntas, okay?
Le agradezco muchísimo, señor presidente.
I appreciate, Mr. President.
Tengo una duda. Si ustedes tienen el mismo documento que tengo yo, ¿cuál es el documento oficial? Porque no puedo hablar de un documento que no es oficial, o sea, ¿cómo es el asunto?
I have a doubt. What is...
¿Qué documento?
What is the document that councillors have?
Okay. Look at, miren the page number 1.
So go to page number 1.
There is no definition MTU, o sea, no está el NTU en las definiciones.
No, you will not find the definition of MEU.
Pero sí en el contenido del documento.
But you will find it within the context of the document.
Ese dispositivo tampoco aparece en las Leyes Generales de Massachusetts.
That particular device also does not appear in any of the Massachusetts general laws.
En ninguna parte de la legislación aparece el NTU.
Nowhere in the legislation, you will find MTU.
Solo hablan de medidor.
Or you will find it's the word meter.
Incluso, las Leyes Generales de Massachusetts hablan de medidor de afuera.
Massachusetts general law specifically talk about meters that are outside.
Página...
Page...
That's not complete. Este documento no está...
The document is not complete.
Tiene la parte de atrás.
Okay.
It's...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Page number 2, página número 2.
Yeah, page number 2.
Letter A, number 3. Si el comisionado puede cambiar las normas sin la aprobación del Consejo, entra en contradicción con el City Charter.
If the commissioner has the right to change or amend the rules and regulations, this is in violation of the City Charter.
Y las Leyes Generales de Massachusetts.
And it's in violation of the Massachusetts general laws.
Ustedes son el Consejo de la Ciudad.
You are the city council.
Los únicos que pueden crear leyes.
You are the only one that could create laws.
Hay una contradicción. Si ven el número 2, el punto 2 se contradice, se opone al punto 3.
If there's a contradiction, if you look at point 2, point 2 and point 3 will contradict each other.
Continúa.
Sí. Lo que pasa es que tengo que ver el, porque tengo que ver este documento que aparentemente es diferente.
What happens is that now the document that I have been presenting appears to be different from what I had. Comprendió, Mr. Rondon.
Dice que me explicó el jueves, pero me explicó que lo iba a publicar, y yo tomé el que está publicado.
El concejal, Bernal, explica que el jueves se explicó que hubieron modificaciones que se hicieron en el comité de ordenanza, los cuales fueron publicados en internet, al igual que lo que nosotros tenemos.
O sea, se hicieron modificaciones.
Some modifications were...
Pues lo correcto aquí yo tengo ese documento, porque esto es un public hearing, y yo debo hablar de lo que ustedes van a aprobar, no de otra cosa.
This is a public hearing, and I'm trying to speak on what you will be approving, not on a different subject.
Bien. Voy a continuar.
I will continue.
Por favor, sea breve.
Sí. Tengo un tiempo definido para mostrar mis sugerencias.
No.
Te voy a dar unos tres o cuatro minutos más.
Okay, usted puede darme ese tiempo.
Tres o cuatro minutos más.
O pensé que tenía más tiempo, que era public hearing.
I thought that this was a public hearing, and they didn't have any time that will be held against me.
Título 2 punto... Título 2B.
Title 2B.
Point 5.
Point 5.
Letter C, point 1.
Letter C, point 1. So...
Cobro de 100 dólares.
Me puede repetir otra vez? Título 2, title 2.
Title 2, letter B. Number 5.
Number 5.
Letter C, 1.
C, C1.
2C1.
2C1.
Se habla de una penalidad de 100 dólares. El Massachusetts General Law contempla esto, pero sin los 100 dólares.
You have a penalty that is worth 100 dollars. The state of Massachusetts does not have that type of penalty.
I think, yo creo que no se puede aprobar algo que contradiga las Leyes Generales.
We should not write something that contradicts Massachusetts general law.
Title 5, título 5. Letter A, number 7.
So 5A6?
Yes.
A6.
Conflito con Massachusetts General Law.
Again, a conflict with Massachusetts general laws.
Las Leyes Generales dicen que el costo solamente es 3 dólares.
The Massachusetts general laws, the Massachusetts...
Massachusetts General Law says 3 dólares, no más, that's it.
Massachusetts general law says that it's 3 dollars, and that's it.
El costo de, ahí hay un costo de mano de obra, y eso que no figura en las leyes.
There's a cost here that does not figure within...
Bien.
Within the Massachusetts general law, I'm going to assume.
This document, este documento...
This document.
Dice que es opcional el NTU.
Says that the MTU is optional.
Le repito, que no está contemplado en las Leyes de Massachusetts.
Again, it is not written anywhere within Massachusetts general laws.
Que es opcional para los clientes actuales de Departamento de Agua.
It's optional for current water customers.
Pero nos dicen que nos van a cobrar 100 dólares si optamos por esa opción.
But it says that...
Por no tenerlo.
That we will be charged 100 dollars if we opt out from this particular option.
Si es opcional, no me puedes cobrar.
If it's optional, then you shouldn't charge me.
Si la ley no avala ese cobro, tampoco me lo puedes cobrar.
If the law does not say that I should be charged, you shouldn't charge me.
Si alguien presenta una queja ante una corte...
If someone comes before the court and puts forward a complaint...
De que es ilegal este cobro.
That this particular charge is illegal.
O el NTU.
Or the MTU.
Y gana el caso.
And that person wins the case.
Entonces, la ciudad va a perder mucho.
Then the city will lose a lot.
Puede perder dinero y credibilidad.
They will lose money and credibility.
Las Leyes Generales de Massachusetts...
Massachusetts general laws...
Contemplan, dicen...
They state...
Lo que hay que cobrar por probar el medidor.
What should be charged for the meters.
Dicen incluso qué tipo de medidor usted debe tener.
He also states what types of meters you should have.
Si el NTU...
If the MTU...
Fuera legal, correcto...
What's legal and correct.
Obligatorio...
Mandatory.
Las leyes lo dirían.
The laws will state it.
Repito...
I repeat myself.
Hay puntos en este documento...
There's certain points within this document.
Que van a abolir códigos que existen ya.
Which will abolish certain codes that already exist.
A ustedes se le ha mentido en varias ocasiones.
You have been lied to in several occasions.
Yo puedo probar todo lo que estoy diciendo, puedo presentar evidencias.
I can prove to you everything that I have told you.
Este documento...
This document.
Debería ser revisado porque también le quita poder a ustedes.
Should be revised, because it's taking power away from you guys.
Y se entra en conflicto con el City Charter de la Ciudad de Lawrence.
And he enters into conflict with the City Charter of the City of Florence.
Y con la forma de gobierno.
And with the form of government.
Porque dice...
Because it states.
Que si el, si no hay comisionado de agua...
Because it states that if there is no water commissioner...
El director de Departamento de Obras Públicas...
The director of the DPW department.
Se reserva el derecho de nombrarlo.
Will have the right to comply with it.
Eso es una contradicción con el título 2...
That's a contradiction with title 2.
Número 4.3...
Number 4.3.
Del City Charter.
Of the City Charter.
Que dice que es el mayor quien nombra al comisionado de agua.
Which says that it's the mayor that appoints the water commissioner.
Hay muchas otras contradicciones.
There's several other contradictions.
No sé si de verdad están interesados en escucharla, o...
I'm not sure if you are truly interested in listening to them.
O están obligados a aprobar el documento así.
Or if you are obligated to approve the document as presented.
Y que después alguien se burlé de nosotros por haber hecho algo mal.
And later on, have people basically look us as a joke.
El punto 1 del tema, el title 2, título 2.1.
Title 1, section 2.
La segunda oración.
The second sentence.
La pueden leer, o sea, vean que no es contravitoria, confusa.
You can read it, it's very contradictory, it's confusing.
No, no, título 2, escuchen, el título, el...
Title 2.
The document has the índice.
The document has index.
Okay, no, no el índice. Authority and rights of Water or Sewer Department.
So article...
Rules and regulations. No representative of the water saver es...
He is referencing...
The second sentence.
Roman, yes. When he says title, when I mention the word title, what he's actually referencing is Roman numeral.
Yes, Roman.
2, A1.
Yo puedo probar, tengo evidencias de todo esto que estoy diciendo.
I have proof of everything that I'm telling you.
Si ustedes quieren...
If you like...
A pesar de esto, aprobar el documento...
Even after this presentation that I'm giving you, approve this document.
Lo harán.
You will.
Pero corremos ese riesgo de que alguien se queje y vaya a otra instancia.
But we run the risk that someone will complain and go beyond.
Además, yo creo que el documento le resta autoridad y poder al Consejo.
Because the document is, you know, taking away rights and responsibilities of the city council.
Contempla el pago de 100 dólares...
It mentions a payment of 100 dollars.
A las personas que no permitan la instalación del NTU en sus casas.
For people that do not want the meter in their house.
No hay un aval, nada, legalmente nada avala eso.
This is not legal, there's nothing legal that says that this is appropriate.
Otra cosa muy importante.
One, another very important thing.
Privacidad de los usuarios.
It's privacy of the users.
El Departamento de Agua...
The Water Department.
No ha presentado una política de privacidad como lo hacen todas las demás compañías y empresas.
Has not presented to you a policy that would address specifically privacy of consumers.
Sobre cómo va a manejar datos sensibles de los usuarios.
Of how certain data, sensible data of the consumers will be handled.
Puedo probar esto.
I can prove to you this.
Tiene la capacidad el Departamento...
Does the department has the capacity?
De saber cuándo abren una llave y cuándo la cierran.
To know when a faucet is open and when it is closed?
Por consiguiente...
As a result.
Si usted está o no en su, si la casa está vacía o habitada.
They will know whether or not your house is inhabited or if people are there.
No digo que ellos van a estar monitoreando eso todos los días.
I'm not saying to you that the Water Department will monitor every day whether or not there's people at the house.
Digo que tiene la capacidad y en cualquier momento pueden hacerlo.
What I'm saying is that they do have the capacity to monitor whether or not you are home.
Podría ser una violación a la cuarta enmienda de la Constitución.
This could possibly be a violation of the Fourth Amendment in the US Constitution.
El gobierno federal...
The federal government.
Dejó sin efecto el programa de vigilancia.
It's against any type of program that would allow anyone to see.
Vigilance.
Yeah. Vigilancia, ¿how do you say vigilancia, Modesto? Vigilancia.
Vigilance.
Vigilance?
Supervision.
Supervision.
A raíz de la denuncia...
In this particular case, it's monitoring.
Yeah, monitoring.
A raíz de una denuncia...
Based on a...
Senus?
No.
Queja?
Una queja...
Complaint.
Complaint.
De que estaba almacenando los números de teléfonos...
That, you know, before, people had been accumulating phone numbers.
Y la duración de las llamadas...
And conversations were being recorded of those calls.
De algunos estadounidenses.
Of certain US citizens.
Con la orden de un juez.
With the order of a judge.
Y en aras de preservar vidas.
In an effort to preserve lives.
Y evitar actos terroristas.
And to try to prevent terrorism.
El Departamento de Agua de la Ciudad de Lawrence...
The Water Department in the City of Florence.
Tiene la capacidad de saber...
Has the capacity of knowing.
Cuando usted está y no está en casa.
When you are and when you are not.
A qué hora abre o cierra una llave.
At what time you open and at what time you close.
Guardar ese registro.
It will be registered.
Y no, no hay nada que le dé esa autoridad, aparentemente. No han mostrado ningún documento, no han mostrado ningún documento...
And no document has been presented.
Ninguna legislación ha mostrado...
There no policy or procedure has been presented.
Que avala eso.
That states your privacy, that preserves your privacy.
Este documento...
This document.
Dos años y medio después.
Two years ago, two, two years and a half after. Después. Después, o sea, dos años.
Yes, yes.
El futuro.
Después.
Two years and, two years and a half after.
Quiere, intentará legalizar
Will try to legalize.
La instalación de ese dispositivo.
The installment or installation of this particular device.
Se dijo que era obligatorio.
It was said that this is mandatory, that it was mandatory.
Y ustedes están viendo que no está en ninguna ley, hoy lo ven, lo quieren poner en este documento.
And now you see that nowhere, there's not a law that states that it was mandatory.
Los usuarios antiguos del departamento de agua
All consumers of the water department.
No estamos obligados
We are not mandated, obligated.
A permitir que nos instalen ese dispositivo.
To allow anyone to install this particular device.
Si es opcional
If this is optional.
Como dice este documento
As this document states.
No deben cobrarnos.
We shouldn't be charged.
Es o no es.
Is it or is it not?
La lectura de los medidores
The reading of the meters.
Está incluida en el precio del agua.
It's included in the price of the water.
El mismo documento dice que tienen que ir a las casas.
The document itself says that they have to go home, at your house, they have to go to your house.
Véanlo en el título B, V.
Take a look at it in number, Roman numeral five.
Number two.
Two. Roman numeral five, letter B.
Excuse me. Título, título en romano, four.
So, four. Yes.
No, es, es V, B.
El número romano cuatro o cinco. Número romano cuatro o cinco.
Sí, ahora es número romano cuatro.
So, Roman numeral four.
Dice que el departamento irá periódicamente
It states that the department clearly
A verificar la lectura correcta al medidor.
Will be able to verify the proper reading of the meter.
Estoy resumiendo, lo es.
I'm just summarizing everything.
Y esa visita es gratis.
And that that visit is free.
Lo cual es una contradicción porque nos van a cobrar cien pesos.
Which is a contradiction because we will be charged a hundred dollars.
Por ir periódicamente también
For going periodically.
A leer el medidor.
To read the meter.
El documento mismo se contradice.
The document itself is contradicting.
Yo
Podría ser específico a lo que es gratis. Podría ser específico a lo que es gratis.
Me refiero a que por esa visita periódica
I am referring to the, you know, the periodical visit, so every time I Donde está aquí, denme el número. Por favor.
Este título V.
El número romano cinco.
Sí, V, un número romano, cinco, perdón, cinco, espera.
Roman numeral five.
Letter B.
Letter B.
Point four.
En ningún lugar dice gratis.
Dice que nos va a cobrar por esa visita, donde dice que nos, dice que irán, pero no dice que hay un cobro por ella.
But it doesn't state that there will be a charge.
Lo que no se cobra es gratis.
So what, it's not being charged, it's free.
Mire, yo quiero, yo creo en el, en, en la institucionalidad.
Look, I believe in institutionality.
Creo en el poder legislativo.
I believe in the legislative power.
Esta es una gran nación por eso, the United States es una gran nación por eso.
The United States is a great nation because of that.
Yo solo pido que hagan lo justo, no digo lo que tienen que hacer, que se cumpla la justicia.
I'm just asking for you to do what's just.
Lo que es legal.
Do what's legal.
La ciudad
The city.
Podría estar cansada de que se irrespeten las leyes tanto.
Could, está
La ciudad podría estar estirin, cansada
The city is probably tired of
De que se irrespeten
Of the disrespect.
Las leyes.
Of disrespecting the laws, the city should be tired of disrespecting its laws.
Y de que se respete al mismo consejo.
And of disrespecting the city council.
Vean los puntos que le dije.
Please review the points that I have given you.
Contradicen la misma constitución de la ciudad incluso.
They are contradicting the city's, the city charter.
Ese documento no debería aprobarse así.
This document should not be approved as is.
Yo voy a sentarme para no quitarle más tiempo.
I will sit down and not take any more of your time.
Yo puedo probar todo lo que le acabo de decir.
I can prove everything that I have presented.
Lo respeto y respeto su tiempo.
I respect you and I respect your time.
Por eso me leí el documento e hice un resumen.
That's why I read the document and gave you a summary.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Is anybody else that would like to address this document?
Good evening, councilors.
Any translation, Mr. Russell?
Thirty-four Cross Street, I'll make it short and sweet, I apologize for missing the informational meeting last Thursday night. I'm addressing two issues, the health, safety, and the security. The smart meters, smart water meters system has the approval of the World Health Organization. Various cancer groups, the FCC, and believe it or not, the liberal state of California, they like the idea of these meters. A meter in Lawrence, they're read once a day as a data burst of less than one second in duration. By five watt ham walkie-talkie, well, he's not here, but Officer Scanlon's walkie-talkie emits far more radiation than people have been complaining about, have been worrying about, I've read this stuff in the paper, I've seen ads in the paper, I've seen it in Facebook. These radios emit about eighteen thousand times as much power density as the smart meters, okay? The only information that is usually transmitted by these data bursts is the serial number of the transmitting unit and serial number of the water meter. The meter readings and the times of the meter are also transmitted. All of the pertinent information, your name, your address, whatever, that is all stored on another computer elsewhere. It's not connected to anything that comes off of these meters. You would need special software to decode these data bursts. Like I said, these data bursts are less than a second in duration. It's like a burst of static, you wouldn't even recognize it. If the water department is projecting a five to ten years of no water rate increase, I think if they want to go with these water meters, these smart water meters, I think that we should all go along with it. I don't think any other communities in this area or in the state can come back with that type of a statement that this system is saving us money. I have no issues, I, I'm still as crazy as I was, I've had one of those meters in there for eighteen months. I have no issues with it, the thing functions beautifully. I think that everybody should get on the ball, on the ball, accept it, it's changed, it's technology. Accept it, thank you.
Is anybody else in the public that would like to talk about this document? If there is none, I'm closing public participation, it's asking me, councilors.
To approve the document with edits provided by the water commissioner, and I make that motion. I would respectfully ask that we waive the thirty days as has been requested by the water commissioner also.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the document as submitted by the commissioner of the water department and to wait the thirty days, it has been properly seconded, discussion.
Just, may I, Council President, just to address the, Mr. Rondon is my neighbor, he's a very nice man and he's put a lot of thought into this document, we've met with him several times. Council Vasquez was extremely gracious and sat with us for a couple of, a little over an hour on July, I think it was, anyway, it was in July. We had a very productive meeting, we emailed back and forth, which seems to work because we do have a language issue. And I know last Thursday, the eleventh, Mr. Peña was extremely gracious and sat for about two and a half hours, maybe a little over that, also with Mr. Rondon and myself, and he, Mr. Peña is bilingual also, which was extremely helpful to make sure that there was a lot of translation, so I feel like Mr. Rondon has done a lot of research on this issue, but at the same time, I think we as a city have been pretty accessible trying to answer his questions, and I just want to take them kind of in the order of the document as it's laid out. The first item that he raised was document, Roman numeral two, sub A, section two. That specifically states, I just want to, sub one only because I've gone through this now ad nauseam, I don't mean to, if you feel you're, I don't, but sub one, two A one, talks about no representative of the water and sewer department has the authority to change or modify said rules and regulations. The water department will not recognize or be bound by any claims of changes. So what that's specifically talking about, somebody shows up at your home, knocks on the door and says, "I'm here and this is the rule," and you say, "No, no, the regs say something different." And they say, "No, no, I'm changing them." The homeowner can say, "Two A one says, 'No, no, we only go by what's here and you can't just change these.'" So that actually is giving one of the protections against what Mr. Rondon was talking about. So I think that that paragraph actually is really helpful, but I just want to be clear, it's not talking about it's a representative or agent of the water department, so somebody cannot just show up randomly and try to claim a change in these rules, so I think that first paragraph actually gives some clarification to homeowners who might feel I think what Mr. Rondon was saying is some people are being told this is mandatory or other things is incorrect or inaccurate. That kind of language is actually trying to help protect homeowners against that type of action. You look at two A two, it says, "The rules and regulations of the water and sewer department may be altered or amended with the discretion of the water and sewer commissioner," and then at the subcommittee level, we added in the words, "with the approval of the city council." That was agreed to with, by Mr. Peña, that was always the intent. It is spelt out in the preamble to the document, but we wanted to clearly restate it right here in this section, so that everyone would really understand what we're getting at, that while the water commissioner has a lot of authority in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, Section thirty-nine E, the sentence is so broad, it basically says that a water commissioner can adopt any rules that they see appropriate. It really gives broad, broad authority to a water commissioner, so that's why we also have the, as a council, is that check and balance, and one of Mr. Rondon's complaints was that there was a lack of check and balances, so I think this document actually helps, I think he's kind of pointing that out. That we needed better checks and balances, and I think this document actually helps reassure that. And then the third thing, and I believe Mr. Peña and I tried to explain this to him at the meeting the other night, and I don't think we got it through clearly, and I, when he spoke, he said, "This is a different document than what I got the other night," we were trying to explain that this had been modified in the draft version, that the final would actually have these extra words added in. That the water and sewer commissioner reserves the right to change or amend the rules and regulations and to make additions it to, at any time with advance notice, to the customer. Obviously, they have to make those changes with the approval of the council, as is required in the above paragraph, but they're not going to mail out notice to every single person that has a water meter in their house. It'll be a posted hearing, just like any public hearing would be, because this is a change to an ordinance. But every customer is not going to get their own special notice every time there might be a change, be it substantial or minimalistic, to this document, and that was what we were trying to get at. So I don't think one, two, or three contradict each other at all, I think they each serve a different purpose and I think they all serve a needed purpose, and so I just wanted to clarify that, when he's saying that the document contradicts itself, those three paragraphs each serve a different purpose, and I think they all blend together and work together well. The next item that he talked about was two C one, and I just want to read two C one in its entirety, because I think there is a hundred dollar fee here, but it's a hundred dollar fee for something really specific, it's not a random hundred dollar fee. It's saying when a customer, after receiving reasonable notice from the water department, refuses to admit a properly identified water and sewer department personnel to enter or have access to the premises, or facilitate in accordance with the terms of the section, then the water and sewer department may give a written notice of its intent, which can include termination of the water services and/or a fee of not more than a hundred dollars per billing period until access is granted. So the, the water department has to be able to get in to read the meter. If you won't let them in to read the meter, they have to have some recourse. And the recourse has got to be that they can shut off your water, or they can fine you, or both. So this is basically what this is getting at, the state law does allow them to fine people, and so this would be a fine, and it's specifically for not allowing them access, it's not a random fine just because they feel like giving out fines, so I just want to be really clear that that has a specific purpose. The next item that Mr. Rondon brought up was subparagraph four, B four. And he talks about a free visit, and sometimes you have to pay for the visit, and that, how those kind of contradict each other. And I just want to, my B four is missing, I go B one, two, three. Can I steal yours for a second?
Sure.
Answer, you said four?
Four, B. What was it?
Only three.
It wasn't B, it was A. A, I'm sorry, you're right.
Madam.
Um, yeah.
Four A four.
Four A four, thank you very much, four A four, my bad notes. It just talks about when a water account requires an adjustment due to customer failure to allow accurate meter readings will be subject to non-refundable manual reading fees, so they talked about having a fee specified in the schedule of fees.
Second. There's a motion on the floor to go beyond ten, I have been properly seconded, in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue.
That's not the one, here, the free, yeah.
It's actually through you, Mr. President, it's actually five B four.
There you go, thank you. Five B four. Talked about the free, what, this is in the instance when our equipment, the city owns that meter, when we think our equipment might be faulty, we'll come out and do a reading manually and we're not going to charge you for that, so we're not going to charge you when our own equipment is faulty. That's totally different than saying we're not going to charge you when you won't allow us access to come in and read the meter, so it's a two, you know, very different scenarios. But in five B four, it says, "The water and sewer department will periodically read the inside meter to verify accuracy of the remote recorder the department uses to obtain your meter reading. In the case of a discrepancy between the two readings, the inside meter reading will be considered accurate and the customer will be billed accordingly." So that's only in an instance when we, as a city, think our own equipment is faulty. In that instance, as a service provider, we would come in and read your meter for free. So I don't think those two scenarios do contradict each other, I think they're very, two very different scenarios and that's why they have different cost benefits. The other one he talked about was item five, A six. Five A six was talking about, you know, the, we can test your meter or you can request a meter test, and the state law does say that we can charge you three dollars in penalty, but we can charge you all of our costs and all of our labor. So in section six, when it talks about make, charging the customer, if the customer was charged six B reads, "If it appears that the customer was charged, has been paid more than they should have, the account will be credited accordingly, however, if it appears that the customer was charged or has paid less, they shall be charged with the additional amount." And it does talk about being billed for the test being done when you are wrong and the city is correct. And that's what they're getting at, is you will be billed the three punitive dollars, but you are going to be billed for costs and labor, which is allowed under the state law. So this is not contradicting the state law, the state law does have a three dollar cap for the punitive fee, but we're allowed to pass on all costs and all labor with that inaccurate meter retest. So I just want to be again clear that this is not contradicting state law. The other thing we kind of talked about, and I, I think the, the MTU language that he raises is true. You don't have to have the MTU, you do have to have a meter. If you want the city's water, you have to have a city meter. You don't have to have the MTU, it is optional. You're not being charged for not having the MTU, but you're being charged for it is for someone to come out and read the meter. We'll give you a free method of meter reading, there'll be no charge for, and it is optional. But what we are going to charge you for is the labor of our employee going out and reading that meter and then having to go back to the office and create a bill. And that is a hundred dollars. And news are typically done quarterly, so if you opt out of that MTU, it's four hundred dollars a year. It's a really substantial fee. And I think it's a good thing that that fee is so substantial because it really encourages people to get on the MTU system. I do think it's important that we have a system as unified as we possibly can. I think I hit most of the points that he raised. The other one I did want to just talk about was, and we've had long discussions about this, is this a Fourth Amendment violation of your constitutional right to privacy? Because the city can tell when your water is on and when it's not on. Mr., gosh, what's your name? No, the other one. Mr. Russell, thank you. Mr. Russell pointed out, it's a one-second blip of transmission. It's not, they don't check your water meter all day long. At midnight each day, it gets read, they're not reading it all day long. But I do want to point out, if you have cable TV in your house and you turn it on, if you have Verizon, Verizon knows you turned your TV on. If you have Comcast, Comcast knows you turned your TV on. If you have electricity, mass electric, national grid, whoever your local electric company is, the minute you turn it on, they know you turned it on. And the minute you turn it off, they know you turned it off. And that's not a constitutional violation. I know that Mr. Pena did have a conversation with the city attorney about this. And she assured us that this is not, same as it's not when you turn on your TV or you turn on your light switch and those companies know what you're doing. It's not a constitutional violation if the city were to access it the way Mr. Rondon thinks we might. But the current practice isn't to do that at all anyway. The current practice is the one reading each day at midnight so that we have the accurate information. It also helps us know if something is freakishly high, it gives them an alert so that they might say, clearly somebody has a burst pipe and they're on vacation and they're not getting. Unless they fill up a pool three days in a row, something's really wrong at that location. So it actually provides some benefit to the property owners as well. But we did go through this document really thoroughly at the subcommittee level. And I want to thank my fellow ordinance committee people for going through that, that was a long process. The most important thing, in addition to what's in this document, that I think we have to stress to all of our constituents, and I encourage you to outreach yourselves, is right now, if you switch on to the city upgraded meter, it's free. And through January first, it's free. December thirty first. After January one, the cost to a homeowner to get that meter is going to be charged to the homeowner. And it's about three hundred and fifty dollars per meter, so it's a substantial cost. The other thing is, I know some people said, well, I have lead pipes, they're not letting me convert. They actually have very low, maybe even no interest loan programs available to do that conversion. And with the high cost of that manual meter reading at the four hundred dollars a whack, I think we worked out, it was like after seven years, it's paid for itself. It's about a three to four thousand dollar cost to change over the pipes through the city program from lead to copper. But at four hundred dollars a year, it's going to have it paid for itself in a little over seven years. So it would be worth it to people to get on that program, get the new meter, get the new pipes. And because in seven years, you're going to have paid off, you're going to have those four hundred dollar a year fees forever if you don't do it. You'll have seven years, but I just think it's really important that we get those dates out to people because December thirty first is going to get here very, very quickly. And a lot of people will be complaining that they have to pay for that meter. So I just wanted to stress that.
Are there any comments from any of the, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Alvarez Rodriguez?
Right, I pretty much follow and, and support a lot of what is in this information. I think if, Commissioner, if you would please, through you, Council President. I know that we also said that we were going to make a earnest attempt to get all this information to people.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Now, the only issue that I'm having right now is with the, with charging people too much for opting out. I believe that there are people who are legitimately concerned with the issue of admitting radiation. They don't even have cell phones. They don't use, you know, they're faithful to what they believe in. They don't have cable TV. And I don't think that they should be penalized for having a different choice. Because if you can have people opt out of the program, then it shouldn't be a punishment because they do it. They should be allowed to do it.
Correct, I agree. And when we came up with the one hundred dollar fee, we looked at our operational costs. And we looked at the amount of labor hours that it would take to go physically read the meter, come back, take all the notes, store it, the filing of the cards, the actual manual generation of the bill. And that came to the hundred dollars.
It would probably be a lot less than what you're doing now. I mean, for example, most people are sending their cards in. They're putting it down and they're sending it in.
Correct, and that's the incorrect way to do that.
Right, but then because they haven't sent, they haven't made changes yet, my understanding is that they're receiving this like exaggerated bill that is they to CF, which means that the Commissioner has made that fee, although they send in a card which said, this is what the meter reads at this time. So I'm just concerned about that and I was hoping that you could address that.
I'm not sure what, what you're referring to in terms of the CF. When we receive a card, we denote the letter C on the actual reading to denote that the customer provided the reading, whether it was, and actually, the C means card.
Right.
Customers can provide it via telephone and we give a, a reading.
Imagine my surprise when I heard that now there's this other category.
C's always existed, it means, C means card. It means that the customer provided us the reading via a card in the mail.
Right.
So we have two, we have two ways to denote that. One is a T for telephone, which means that they called and provided, one is a C for card. And we were, and we type in exactly what we, what we're provided. So unless there was a mistake when the customer misread.
I've had a couple of constituents call and say that there, that there was a new category that they were not, they never saw before. And that when they called in, they said, well, that's the Commissioner. The Commissioner has put in and said that you should be charged X amount. Although that X amount is clearly different from what it would be if, if they took the, the meter that, as it was read.
That's not the case. If they do provide us a reading, we go based off the customer's reading. The only time that we estimate is when a reading isn't provided.
Okay, so I will bring these customers to you.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we will try to clarify what's going on.
Sure.
But again, I do not believe that people should be penalized for opting out of the program. If we genuinely say you can opt out, then don't penalize them.
And the purpose isn't to penalize them, this is, this is our labor cost.
And also, you know, the issue of bringing, well, I would look at if there was a way of maybe reducing that at some point. Because again, I think there will be so few number of people that maybe we could.
And that, and that really becomes the issue, is if there was a great number of people, our cost would obviously be lower.
I know, the greater the number, but there may be a way. So, you know, maybe we should just keep an eye on that and just for the future. And the other issue is that, you know, we look at this, this little gadget now and, and the radiation that pours out. But there's also work from the electric company and other utility companies where they're going to have these new meters installed that have an even greater, you know, radiation.
That is correct.
And I know that that's coming down the pipeline. And what aggravates me is that we will have no say in that unless we get up and get to Congress, you know, and say to Congress, you should not be allowing this to happen. So just for everybody to know that that's not one that we have, you know, any control over. And this one, we don't. And again, I want to reemphasize that, that the program that we've selected is actually not as bad. But if people are looking at it collectively, you know, in terms of everything around them that's making it, you know, difficult, they don't have microwaves, you know, that kind of stuff. People who are, who are really, really committed to a lifestyle that prevents having all this radiation in their daily lives. And for that reason, I don't think it should be a penalty. Then I want to make sure that we clarify for Mr. Rondon, is my error, the things that were said. Counselor Bernal, you know, really did point out that there were some issues here that were addressed. Let's understand that, right? It's, may I say that real quick in Spanish? Because I want to make sure that when our friend goes to the radio and talks to, you know, our constituents, either they're getting the right information. Solamente para decirle que la concejal Bernal estaba revisando los puntos que usted dio. Y en A uno, de la título dos como usted dice, el A uno. Usted no lo tiene ahí. Sí, pero si usted va a la página, la página es dos. La página dos. Okay, vamos a agregar así que es más rápido. Okay, en el A uno solamente dice que ningún representante del agua, como estuvimos hablando aquí ahora mismo, no puede imponer sus propias leyes o hacer cambio en ninguna de estas leyes tocando a su puerta. So usted tiene el derecho, ¿verdad?, de que si viene alguien a su puerta y le dice, no, que modificaron la ley, que si esto es el otro, tengo la autoridad. Que usted sabe, usted tiene derecho de chequear con nosotros, ¿verdad?, de tocar la base con nosotros para asegurarse que esa persona tiene la autoridad. Pero en la, en la A dos. Yeah, en la A dos. Y nosotros, nosotros todos estábamos de acuerdo. Que aunque dice en el principio de este manual, dice que no sé, que el consejo municipal tiene la autoridad para hacer los cambios y todo tiene que ser aprobado por el Consilio. Aunque lo dice al principio, nosotros pensamos que es mejor también que esté en el detalle. So en A dos nosotros pusimos with the approval of the City Council, con el permiso del Consilio Municipal. Ahora usted dijo la tres. Específicamente cuál es la. Cuál es, cuál fue su adhesión? Que puede ser, pero también es aprobado por el City Council.
Council President. I'm sorry, there's dialogue going back and forth and there's no translation going on.
I just want to tell him what.
But I have no idea what he's saying and you're going back and forth, he's not even talking on the mic. I mean, with all due respect, I'm not knowing what's going on.
I'm just making, I'm just translating what was said by Counselor Bernal. And she clarified for him the issues that he was, and she said that, everything she said is what I'm saying, that I'm going to, but I'm, right, I'm not going, I'm not, I'm there to make sure that we don't go back and forth.
Yeah, let's not go back and forth so that we don't.
No vamos a ir de atrás adelante para terminar porque estamos todos cansados un día al lado. Pero la, la, dice que se puede hacer cambios a las regulaciones para, y notificar, sin notificar al. Al customer, ¿verdad?, sino al cliente. Como nosotros hicimos ahora, nosotros pusimos una audiencia en el periódico, ¿verdad? Para dejarles saber a la gente que hay esta reunión, que hay esta audiencia. So in ese caso sería lo mismo, okay? Pero no, no que se va a hacer, mandar a cada persona notificación de qué esto está pasando, sino que tenemos que, Aaron, no, asegurarnos que, en el periódico.
Again, again, I want to limit, Aaron, Aaron. Por favor, no, no vamos a conversar para atrás para adelante. Ella te está explicando lo que.
Se contestó.
La concejal explicó, así que por favor, deja que ella hable, no diga más comentarios, okay?
Okay, now, the other one was.
Two C one?
Two C one. So, C one, right? Okay, aquí lo que se está comentando en términos de los cien dólares es que si no le dan acceso al departamento de agua para que puedan leer los miren, okay? Se le va a hacer una, ¿cómo se dice?, un somo.
Se va, se va penalizar.
Yeah, penalizar un somo de cien dólares. Eso es por no darle acceso a la propiedad. So ellos pueden ir para ver si hay algún problema, por qué sale tan alto, ¿verdad?, y así por el estilo. So si el agua puede ser, puede ser como dijo la concejal, que uno de la, de la, de los pipes.
Tuberías.
De la tubería está rota y ustedes no se han dado cuenta y por eso que está tan alto, pues ellos necesitan acceso a su propiedad para, para ver por qué está pasando eso. Que ha salido fuera de lo normal. What's the?
That was.
B four was the one, he said. Section five, B four.
Oh, section five, B four.
Sometimes it's free and sometimes it's not free. It's free when we test for the city's benefit. They have to pay when they refuse us access. It's not the same set of facts, so it's not, it should be different costs.
Que es diferente el costo, estoy en la página seis. B cuatro. Que el punto aquí es que es de gratis si el departamento de agua necesita entrar por algo que es su responsabilidad. Ahora, si no le dan acceso para ellos hacer la, los arreglos que tengan que hacer, entonces es que se le da ese somo de los cien dólares. So que dice ella que no está contradiciendo.
Very different sets of facts.
Que son diferentes los, los hechos, son muy diferentes.
Oh, finish?
Está ser etint, oh, y apt out. Uh, como sabe, usted tiene la, el derecho de no, um, como este, no participar en el programa del mire que está fuera, que está dando la radiación. Yo sé que usted ha hablado de, de la issue de privacidad. Pero que ellos dicen que toma menos de un segundo para transmitir la información, y que la información lleva un número binary, binario, ¿verdad?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Binario, ¿cómo es?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Lleva un número binario, y todo va codificado, que solamente el departamento de agua tiene el programa en la computadora para sacar los datos, y ellos entonces lo ponen con su dirección y su nombre, etc. Pero el nombre de la persona, todo eso, nada de eso va transmitiendo. Un segundo, ellos dicen, una vez al día, no sé si va a ser a las doce de la noche, a las doce de la, a las doce de la noche, se va a transmitir. Un segundo, toda la información. Nosotros tuvimos hablando que debemos de considerar que no, bueno, yo estoy proponiendo que el gasto de, a las personas que deciden no participar en este programa no sea tan alto, porque hay personas que en realidad tienen, you know, um, miedo de la radiación, han vivido su vida tratando de prevenir contacto con tanta radiación, esas personas no tienen celulares, um, hay personas que no tienen, este, la televisión, el cable, por eso mismo. Yeah, aquí mismo, Arthur Bryan, que estuvo aquí, es una tal persona. Uh, otra persona es Richard McCarthy también, que él rehúsa usar cualquier cosa que transmite radiación. Y que por eso, uh, la decisión de ellos no participar en el programa no debe de ser penalizada.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel. Okay, uh, there is a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second. Again, the motion is to approve the document as submitted by the Water Department with the changes that were made at the subcommittee level, and, uh, the motion also carries a waiver of the thirty days. Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Clerk, let's continue with document two sixty-five fourteen. Thank you, Mr. Peña.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peña.
Y gracias usted también.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Document two sixty-five, two thousand and fourteen. Notice this hereby giving the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, council chambers at seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendments to the revised ordinances to be amended by adding a new paragraph, uh, following new section ten point two eight one forty of the municipal code. Right turn is prohibited to be inserted in proper order. Derso Ave southbound onto Derso Ave from Route one fourteen Shopping Plaza and Parking Lot. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published September eighth.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address, to speak, uh, to document two sixty-five fourteen? If there is none, enclosed in public participation, councilors.
I'd like to make a motion and we adopt this measure.
There is a motion to approve document two sixty-five fourteen, it has been properly second, discussion. There is none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I'm sorry.
She had her end.
It's done, what's done is done, let's just go home.
You're gonna put an emergency on that?
No, no, let's, you wanna wait the thirty days, though, let's do it. I was just gonna say, at the subcommittee level, we did not have feedback from the police and DPW, and I didn't know if we were gonna do that tonight, but everyone's comfortable, let's just be comfortable.
Do we have the documents?
I don't know, that's what I'm...
Okay, then let's check. Just to make sure.
Yeah, we have a copy of the ordinance proposal that drafted by the city council.
That's a proper concern, though.
My papers are so messed up now, 'cause I gave them away. Sorry.
Oh, Mark has the information to be provided.
Yeah, the document, that's what I was trying to say, is that at the subcommittee level, we really didn't have...
You have the info?
Yeah, you brought, I have the, yeah, it's all, it's on the...
Oh, it says here that Mark's...
It's on the packet, it's all in the packet.
And the officer was here early.
He's here.
Earlier. Is he still here?
He's sitting there.
Oh, my God. Why don't we just give him a minute, too?
Hey, you wanna come forward, please?
Yeah, you might as well speak. Yeah. We feel so safe.
Are you still looking?
Yeah, tell us.
She's looking for the report.
Yeah, I don't see the, um...
But maybe you could just tell us.
We don't have anything other than these two letters.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Yeah, I don't have, I even, my thing is blank, it says, I attached a proposed ordinance language as requested. From the body, I'm resending.
Send the, uh, e- uh, email.
What is it that we're missing, Madam Chair?
I don't have the ordinance, I've never seen the actual ordinance.
Looks like this.
This right here?
It's very short, it's brief, it's three sentences.
Derso Ave, southbound, this, right here?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Derso Ave, southbound onto Derso Ave from Route one fourteen, so southbound is if I'm heading from the fountain, heading towards the plaza, heading from the fountain towards... Where am I starting at, Wendy's, am I starting at?
Wendy's, starting at Wendy's.
If I start at Wendy's and I head towards...
And you're heading toward Andover, that's southbound.
So I'm not even gonna go by...
Pardon?
Derso Ave, it'll be behind me at that point? I'm at Wendy's, heading towards Andover?
So, right, so if you're at the plaza, and you're coming out of the plaza, you can go right or left on Derso Ave, you make a right, you're going south. You make a left, you're gonna go on Winthrop Avenue.
Yeah.
Make a right, you're on Derso, going to Andover, in that direction, you make a left, you go to Winthrop Ave.
Right turn prohibited to be inserted in the proper, oh, okay. So, just, where would you be, like, physically, where is the sign going? That's all, I'm just really not clear on what we're...
It'll be right across, when, if you're, if you're at the plaza, if you're in the alleyway behind the plaza, or if you're coming out of the plaza itself in the front, there will be a sign there, either on that, either across, and I don't care where the sign is, whether it's on that side of the street or across the street. But that's where the sign will be located, it says...
There's still people coming out of the parking lot, is that it?
For commercial vehicles, just for trucks.
That they could only make a right? Is that what you're saying?
It's just for trucks, commercial trucks.
That they could only make a right turn?
They can only make a left turn, they cannot make a right turn. Would that sh...
The right-hand turn is allowing these tractor-trailer trucks when they're coming out of the plaza. If you're coming in from behind the plaza, there's an alleyway.
Right.
If everybody's familiar with it, so if the trucks are making the drop-offs when they're pulling out, and they're making the right-hand turns, they're going through the residential neighborhoods with these trucks.
So, through you, it, I, it, it would be helpful, but it doesn't say trucks on there, can we, you had a, you had a chance to go in there, can you have a...
Commercial veh- we'll probably mind if I just like to, commercial vehicles.
So, commercial, I don't, I don't, the language isn't important, but, commercial vehicles works for me. Or tr- trucks, I mean, over ten thousand.
We'd have to spec- if we're gonna specify weight, and then it's up to you how we wanna...
Madam Chair of the ordinance committee, you, uh...
I'm okay now, I...
You're okay now?
Yeah, to, thank you very much. We, we never had this conversation at the committee level, so I just need to get my head around it. Do you wanna put commercial vehicles, or do you wanna...
It's just, it's just trucks, I mean, we can't, it's just, it's just the big trucks, the, the object here is that, these big trucks are going in, they're hitting trees, they're causing problems for the neighborhood, so it's just the big trucks, and most of the big trucks that we're getting are coming out of there. They can still get to where they need to go, they can make a left and get on Winthrop Ave and go wherever they need to, whether the highway or whatever, but to make a right to cut through is doing some damage in the area.
So, let me ask the...
Go ahead.
Council President, I'm sorry, but, um, okay, so if they're coming from one fourteen and they make a right...
They're, no, they're coming from the shopping plaza, not from, right here.
So they're coming out, they're exiting the plaza?
If you're inside the plaza and you come out the back, you're kinda looking at Taco Bell.
Yes.
Right, um, but you're not on one fourteen, you're in the, the back exit, you're hitting Derso Ave, I finally figured this all out, uh, you cannot take a right turn, you have to take the left.
The left onto the highway.
Exactly, go back towards, yeah.
You make a left, you run the highway, yeah.
Four ninety-five that way.
Okay, now I get it.
Thank you.
'Cause I was saying, wait a minute, why would you wanting to make a left, it's contrary to...
Yeah.
But now I understand, because...
Yeah.
It's looking this way.
That's exactly the problem I was having, too.
Okay. You're going through that, too?
Now that we are clear, let's take a vote.
The commercial, we had that commercial trucks on there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work it out.
Ten thousand, I think they're ten thousand pounds, I think that's the...
There's no parking.
No parking?
There's no parking of commercial vehicles in those areas.
Yeah, so maybe that we can, we can replicate that tonnage or that weight.
I'll touch base with the city clerk tomorrow morning, we can...
Okay, let's take a vote. Uh, motion has been made on properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, document three twenty-five fourteen, we're gonna table the document, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Plant?
Uh, yes, thank you, make a motion to table document thirty-five fourteen.
Uh, motion has been made on...
Twenty-five, I'm sorry, three twenty-five fourteen.
Three twenty-five fourteen.
Second.
Motion has been made on properly second to table document three twenty-five fourteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, committee reports, Madam Chair of the, uh, ordinance committee.
Um, thank you, Council President. Um, the, uh, ordinance committee met on, um... On, and, um, anyway, at the last ordinance committee meeting, we had reviewed the, um, document number two eighty-three dash fourteen, which is handicap parking requested at one eighty-nine Garden Street. Resident Antoinetta Balsamo was requested by Council Almonte, who came up with, from the committee, with unanimous favorable recommendation to order public hearing, and any requisite language from the city attorney, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to order public hearing, and it has been properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Similarly, document two eighty-four dash fourteen was sim- also handicap parking, that was at forty-six Cambridge Street, requested by Bruce J. Karen, and again, that came up from the ordinance committee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order public hearing, and any requisite language from the city attorney, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing on document two eighty-four fourteen, it has been properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Um, thank you, Council President. Um, document two ninety dash fourteen was with regard to parking on Fitz Street, they were requesting some restrictions for a drop-off and pickup area, that was put on the agenda by Council Reyes, and again, that came out of the ordinance subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order public hearing, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing on document two ninety fourteen, it has been properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Continue.
Uh, document number two ninety-three dash fourteen is with regard to parking on Lebanon Street between Hampshire Street and Lawrence Streets. This was requested by, um, Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez, and it came up from the u- subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order the public hearing, and any requisite language from the city attorney, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing for document two ninety-three fourteen, it has been properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Um, document number three oh three dash fourteen was a request for a block party on Yale Street for Saturday, September twentieth, was requested by Sebastian Brown via Counselor Toomey. Uh, Mr. Brown had not submitted any paperwork at, as of the subcommittee level meeting, so we did send him correspondence, I personally called his house, I know Council Toomey emailed him, um, just looking for any additional documentation, we basically wanted just some verification that he'd reached out to the police department, and either they determined no auxiliary was needed, or...
I understand that it has been canceled.
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, um, he did get back to us, that say, that, to, they canceled the party and to withdraw the document.
Second.
So, um, make a motion to withdraw.
Second.
Motion to withdraw document three oh three fourteen, it has been properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, continue.
And then, um, finally, document number three eighteen dash fourteen was a two-ribbon road race, it was on October twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, through the Reliefs Inn, was requested by John Bruno. Um, a representative of the two-ribbon race was at the ordinance subcommittee meeting, and she did have the sign-off paperwork, it was missing the sign-off from the police department, um, and she was gonna get that and file it with the city clerk before today, so I'm hoping that she did that. He's checking. She actually had the original, I had all the sign-offs except for the police department.
It's not here either.
You have not gotten, received it? So, um, it's coming up on October twelfth, we could table it till our next meeting because we have time.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, so, we make approval, subject to filing, and maybe just have the clerk or the secretary reach out to, um...
So, the motion is approved, approved, subject to...
To make sure, approve, to the filing.
Okay. You second the motion?
The...
Motion has been made to approve document three eighteen fourteen pending, uh, subject to...
Filing, yeah.
The filing of the, uh, appropriate papers. It has been properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, uh, document three oh four thirteen, two eighty-one fourteen, and one thirty-four fourteen, I would like to take those documents as a group to withdraw without prejudice.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor to withdraw those three documents without prejudice, it has been properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, councilors, I'm not gonna even ask if you wanna go into our business, so... I'm gonna go, uh, straight in, uh, let me see, wait a second, did we miss something? Yeah, no, okay, no. Uh, into new business, uh, document three nineteen fourteen handicap parking is gonna be referred to the ordinance committee. Document three twenty fourteen handicap parking sixty-two Congress Street to the ordinance committee. Document three twenty-one fourteen handicap parking to the ordinance committee. Document three twenty-two fourteen establishing a Lawrence Veterans Advisory Council is gonna be sent to the ordinance committee. Document three twenty-three fourteen taxi stand to be added, uh, ordinance committee. Document three twenty-four fourteen parking Chicken Road to the ordinance committee, park, uh, document three twenty-six fourteen clergy, clergy parking permit to the ordinance committee. And finally, uh, document three twenty-seven fourteen appointment to commission on disabilities is gonna be sent to the personal committee. Counselor?
How's the committee meeting on the twenty-eighth of September?
The twenty-eighth of September?
I work with the members.
Twenty-ninth September?
Yeah.
Monday?
Monday it is.
Sounds wonderful.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair of the ordinance committee indicated that we are not meeting this Thursday.
Okay, no.
Okay, any other, any other information?
No, since there are no new business for budget and finance, no meeting tomorrow.
There's gonna be no, no meetings?
Yeah, we don't have any new, uh, new documents.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Will not be...
The next?
Ordnance committee.
Oh, it would be, uh, on October...
What, what the next meeting? Ninth.
October, October.
After council?
Yes, after council meeting. Yes. Okay.